I'd like to call this meeting to order, the meeting of April the 23rd, 2015. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment of silence. You may be seated. At this time, I'm gonna, I see two city officials here, and I understand someone else may be here, but if we have any elected city officials or anyone from the city staff, just please stand. May I write, I see you. Dr. Whitaker, I noticed you when you came in. You're the interim city manager. Welcome. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent of this part of the program. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
For our pledge allegiance and statement, we have students tonight from Churchland Academy Elementary School. The first being Gabrielle Elise Bisset. And as I call your names, you can come down. Gabrielle's a first grader at Churchland Academy. Enjoys playing soccer and softball. She wants to become a singer or dancer when she becomes a young adult. She will be moving to Spain later this year. She is the daughter of Gregory and Michelle Bisset. And I would ask the parents at this time, if you would please stand. For our statement, we have Bryson Isaiah Bailey. Is a sixth grade honor roll student at Churchland Academy. Serves as president of the Student Council Association. He's a member of the National Elementary Honor Society. He has successfully passed his SOL test in areas of reading, math, and science. He's a member of the Grove Baptist Church Youth Choir and Usher Board. Has a passion for basketball and football. Received the first place trophy in 2014 for his performance in the Citywide All-Star Game. He wants to join the United States Navy and become a Master Chief Information Systems Technician. He is the son of Wim and Kenyatta Bailey. Would you all, parents, would you all please stand at this time? And at Churchland Academy, we have Ms. Karen D. Clark, principal, and Mr. Dean W. Deloats Jr. as the assistant principal. Will you all please stand to be recognized as well? Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Churchland Academy Statement of Purpose. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, Dr. Bracy, thank you for inviting us to be here this evening. Churchland Academy has many enrichment opportunities for our students. We have the 600 Club, the National Elementary Honor Society, the Churchland Academy Band and Chorus, the Student Council Association, and the Odyssey of the Mind. This year, our Odyssey of the Mind Club placed first among regional schools. In addition to our strong academic environment, we have close relationships with the families, businesses, and military within our community. Churchland Academy's PTA has forced this year. Many parents have joined the association. The increased support aided our school in multiple fundraising opportunities. Furthermore, local businesses have supported our school by providing fun and delicious treats. Pizza Hut, Chick-fil-A, and Chuck E. Cheese have supported our students by providing reinforcements for our school. We have a wonderful parent volunteer. Furthermore, we have volunteers from the United States Coast Guard and the United States Navy who provide assistance on a daily basis. Churchland Academy Patriots aren't only successful in the classroom. Many of our students are active participants in the Portsmouth Parks and Recreation Department's sports activities. Our boys and girls are active, playing football, basketball, baseball, softball, and soccer. Regardless of whether we are in the, in school or on the court or field, we represent Churchland Academy with Patriot pride. Churchland Academy is a very special school. Our school participates in Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Program of Virginia, PBIS. PBIS rewards students for their good behavior. We earn Patriot Points for meeting our school's expectations for positive behavior, attitudes, and being successful in school. On Friday mornings, we exchange our Patriot Points for fun items such as games, puzzles, and school supplies. In addition, we can purchase certificates to assist in the gym, office, or library. We can buy special certificates to earn extra PE time or to eat with our principal, Mrs. Clark. At our school, we are always respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. We employ a lot of technology in our school. I love going into the computer lab and using our technology resources. We utilize Accelerator Reader, Education City, Reading Eggs, Interactive Achievement, Pearson Success Maker, Pearson Success Net, and vocabulary. Vocabulary is an online library. Vocabulary is an online library of education hip-hop songs that make learning fun. The rap songs aid in teaching reading, mathematics, social studies, and science concepts. Another of my favorite things to do in the lab is coding. In February, Churchland Academy participated in the Hour of Code. We went into the computer lab and participated in the computer science tutorials. It was so much fun. Coding has enhanced my mathematic and problem-solving skills. Next month, our school is sending teams from third through fifth grade to Old Dominion University to compete in the Great Computer Challenge. The students, the students work in groups of threes to solve problems using graphic and desktop publishing. The Churchland Academy faculty put students first. We believe that all students have the ability to learn, achieve, and succeed. Students learn best in a safe, caring instruction environment that promotes student learning. Students must maintain good attendance to promote academic excellence. A quality education, continuous improvement, and positive communications are the shared responsibilities of all stakeholders. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair, Mr. Parent, Board members, and Dr. Bracy. We thank you for this opportunity for Churchland Academy to share with you our community engagement highlights this evening. Churchland Academy is a strong school family, not only for the community within the building, but we're an extension of the entire Churchland area. At this time, I have my great colleagues that are here with me this evening, which are part of my leadership team, and just part of our staff that help us to do a great job, as you can see, as we have Gabrielle and Bryson here to represent the students of Churchland Academy. This time, I would like for the leadership team and members of Churchland Academy's family to please stand. Thank you so much for allowing Churchland Academy to present to you this evening.
Gabrielle, thank you on behalf of the Portsmouth Public School Board. Thank you for being a student at Portsmouth Public Schools. Safe travels to Spain. Thank you very much.
Bryson, thank you very much, wonderful speech. Thank you for being a student here, and thanks for being here with us tonight. Thank you.
School Board Mission Statement, Ms. Sarah D. Heinz, Board Member, Ms. Heinz?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Call the board's attention to attendance. Would you please indicate your attendance by electronic roll? Madam Clerk?
All members are present.
Thank you very much. Request for approval of the agenda. I'd like to call your attention to the agenda. I have two changes. One will be an addition, Ms. Durham is typing that up for us that we discussed, came to a conclusion with. She's going to have that up for us. And a change in the language on item number 15 would be changed to read, "Request for the Approval for Long-Term Suspension with Possible Readmission by Plan Developed by the Superintendent."
Move for approval.
Yes.
To move in properly, second, did we adopt the agenda as changed in the discussion? If not, please indicate your preference through electronics. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, recognition, recognition of Christopher D. Walker, second-place winner of the Group 4A State Competition for Indoor Track Churchill High School, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. Will Christopher D. Walker please come forward at this time? As he's, as he's coming, I will read some of his accomplishments. Chris Walker is a senior at Churchland High School, where he has been a member of the indoor and outdoor boards' track and field team for the last two years. The running events that Chris has participated in while on track, on the track team consist of the following: 55-meter dash, 100-meter dash, 200-meter dash, 300-meter dash, 300-meter hurdles. He is a leg on the 4-by-1, the 4-by-2, and the 4-by-4 meter relay teams. He also does the high jump, the long jump, and the triple jump in field events. His accomplishments include the following: Five-time conference champion, two in the 55, one in the 100, one in the 200, and 4-by-1 meter relay team. Conference runner-up, 4-by-2. Five-time regional champ, two in the 55, one in the 100, one in the 200, and one in the 4-by-1 meter relay team. And the state runner-up this past indoor season. He is desirous of attending Norfolk State University, where he plans to pursue a major in political science in the fall. With Christopher tonight are his coaches, Mr. Alonso Ricks and Mr. Quentin Harper, and three of his brothers, Tavion Walker, Trayvon Walker, and Tywon Walker. Yes? Christopher Webber, plaque for you tonight. And it reads, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to Christopher D. Walker, Churchland High School Senior, Member of the Indoor and Outdoor Boards' Track and Field Team for the 2014-15 Academic Season. In special recognition of his capturing second-place honors at the Group 4A State Competition for Boards' Indoor Track, and acknowledgement of his consistency in participating as a student athlete. And this is by James E. Bridgeford, Board Chairman, Claus C. Parent Jr., Board Vice Chairman Eli Bracy III, Division Superintendent. And of course, you know, our theme is focusing on student achievement. Presented to you this day, Thursday, April 23rd, 2015." Congratulations.
Next item is presentation, recognition of schools with the highest attendance rate for March. Dr. Bracy?
At this time, I'll call on Mr. Joseph Wiggins.
We're pleased to report the monthly student attendance for March 2015. We move next to the elementary schools, and we compare the current year with the previous year. In 2014, at the elementary level, the rate of attendance was 95.48%, and for the current year is 94.98%. And there was a slight, a slight decrease of five tenths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors is Churchland Primary with 96.62%. And taking second place honors is Churchland Elementary with 95.90%. And the difference separating the first and second place recipients is seven to two one-hundredths of a percentage point. When we look at the middle schools last year, this time, it was 94.45%, and for the current year is 92.47%. And it went up by two hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors is Churchland Middle with 95.25%. And coming in second place is Cradoff Middle with 94.20%. And the difference separating the first and second place winners here is 1.5%. We move next to the high schools. For 2014, it was 92.15%. And for the current year, 91.21%. And again, there was a slight decrease of nine to four one-hundredths of a percentage point. Coming in first place, once again, is Churchland High School with 95.52%. And Woodrow Wilson coming in second place with 91%. And the difference separating the first and second place winners is 4.52%. I think I, no, I saw Dr. Becktholz. Of course, Dr. Becktholz here, and I think I saw Mr. Johnson. Plus, we have the middle school principals here. Because of the visitation demands on the principals this time of the year, we don't require them to alter their schedules. We move next to the specialty facilities. For 2014, it was 89.74%. And for the current year, 92.13%. The attendance went up slightly, 2.39%. With first place honors is Mount Herman Preschool with 93.32%. And coming in second place is Churchland Preschool with 92.75%. And again, the difference separating the first and second place winners is fifty-seven hundredths of a percentage point. When we look at the school division as a whole, for 2014, it was 93.74%. And for the current year, 93.92%. And it went up slightly, eighteen hundredths of a percentage point. The next slide shows a comparison of 2014 as compared with the current, current year. The figures are there, we've already shared those with you. And we would be remiss were we not to thank everyone who is responsible for helping get the students to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Item number four, for electronic vote, request for the approval of a resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, May 4th through the 8th, 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins?
At this time, we have invited the teachers of the year representing the elementary division. Garen Clark was a teacher at West Haven Elementary. If you would please join me now. Jessie Boone from Cradoff Middle. Shelly Nason, a teacher at IC Norcom High School, had a medical problem and is not able to be here tonight. And Paul Wilson from Woodrow Wilson. Mr. Bridgeford, Dr. Bracy? Resolution, whereas teaching is an honorable profession, one which all Americans know well because of their personal experiences. And whereas the National Educational Association and the National Parent-Teacher Association spearheaded the annual observance of Teacher Appreciation Week, which commenced in 1984. And whereas the National Teacher Appreciation Week, May the 4th through the 8th, 2015, recognizes a teacher's significance to our nation's future and to our students' future well-being. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board convey its profound appreciation and the heartfelt gratitude of the Portsmouth citizenry to those individuals involved in the teaching-learning process for their diligence, their zeal, and their care of this great historic seaport city's young people. And be it further resolved that the school board salute the school division's teacher corps as a manifestation of respect and support for the magnificent role they play in the educational process, and that the school board designate May 5th, 2015 as National Teacher Appreciation Day. And be it finally resolved that this resolution of commendation be made a part of the school board's official minutes, and that copies be sent to all administrative units, schools, and municipal libraries for public display.
Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second?
It's moved in properly, second, did we adopt the resolution? In the discussion? If not, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Mr. Parent, would you put, please push a yes for me? Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Item number five, item number five for electronic vote, request for the approval of the minutes. A regular monthly meeting held on Thursday, March 12th, 2015. A special meeting, public hearing, held on Thursday, March 19th, 2015. And a regular monthly meeting held on Thursday, March 26th, 2015.
Move for approval.
Second?
It's moved in properly, second, in the discussion, Mr. Lamb?
Yes, thank you Chairman Bridgeford. Considering that I was not physically present for the 26th meeting, however, I, that was the meeting where we had the phone conference to call in. Because of that, I'm going to go ahead and vote accordingly to reflect that I was absent.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
Six yes votes, three abstentions, it passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number six for discussion, public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to three minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Morgan Sims, Ms. Brianna Horn, and Ms. Olivia Wright.
Okay, let me say this while you're coming to the podium. And I'd asked the last time, and I forgot all about it. We're going to give you five minutes to speak if you need up to five minutes, okay? All right, thank you.
Good evening Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, and all assembled here this evening. We are here tonight to share with you some information about our amazing dance program in Portsmouth Public Schools, House and Churchland High School, under the direction of Ms. Lanisha Landrau, who is also Churchland High School's Teacher of the Year. My name is Olivia Wright, and this is my first year in the Center of Excellence Visual Performing Arts Dance Program. And I'm a Level 1 student. I will admit, the program is nothing like I expected it to be. We not only learn various dance techniques, but Ms. Landrau teaches us choreography skills, dance history, health and nutrition, injury prevention, and details on anatomy and kinesiology, so we are able to better execute movements to their fullest potential safely. She also requires us to demonstrate leadership skills, professionalism, discipline, cognitive thinking, creative thinking, public speaking, collaborative work, accurate completion of research projects, and so much more. As I prepare for a career in helping students reach their artistic goals, I look forward to continuing in the program and gaining all the knowledge Ms. Landrau has to offer.
Hello, my name is Brianna Horn. I am a Level 2 student, and this is my second year in the Center of Excellence Dance Program. Ms. Landrau has helped me both in and outside of the classroom. She is not only my teacher, but someone I can confide in and help me get through the difficult times in my life. She devotes most of her time to the school and her students in spite of the challenges and obstacles thrown her way. When we did not have the financial or physical support needed to create or recreate our dance studio into an inviting, safe environment, Ms. Landrau figured out how to make it happen. Our classroom went from concrete floors and dingy, multi-colored walls to bright and inviting classroom with dance sprung floors because Ms. Landrau worked hard on creating and building a room where we can safely develop our artistic craft and much more. She consistently encouraged us to grow academically and personally.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Sims, and I'm a Level 3, Level 3 student, and this is my third year in the Center of Excellence Dance Program. In addition to what my fellow dancers have already shared, Ms. Landrau also teaches the AC 13th General Dance Course at Churchland High School, which Christopher Walker is also a part of. And it teaches the students the basics of everything we do in the Center of Excellence program while exposing them in various career opportunities, using the skills studied in the course. She also coaches the CHS dance team, known as the CHS Truckettes, after school. We are a consistent, award-winning dance team, recently brought home our first-place award from our latest competition. Because of what we learn and expected to demonstrate in our school, in our dance courses, we have been recognized- we have been recognized by others and personally invited to perform in the Russell Athletic Bowl this upcoming December in Orlando, Florida. We are invited to perform in the Orange Bowl last year and could not attend due to finances. We are currently working on raising money so the Center of Excellence Dance students can partake in such a great opportunity this year. We will be performing in the game's kickoff show, halftime show, and universal parade. The dance program at Churchland High School is a great program, which not only challenges us in various levels, it allows us to gain knowledge in various content areas while allowing us to enjoy what we are learning to prepare us for success in the future. Lastly, we would like you to mark in your calendars and join us at our spring production on Thursday, May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, as the entire Center of Excellence Visual Arts and Performing Arts students put on a performance to display various art pieces. The doors open at six-thirty, and the show begins promptly at seven. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second. Ms. Williams?
Just wanted to certainly have Ms. Landrau stand so we could certainly meet her, she sounds like a real motivator, and thank you for everything that you do.
Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't think that we're not interested in coming to the production, but we happened to have a board meeting that night. But we will be with you in spirit, and it's an outstanding program that you're involved in. Some of the graduates have gone on to some very prestigious universities and colleges and gotten full rides as well. I know one personally who's at NYU now. So, thank you very much for coming, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Ms. Anna King and Mr. Martin Burke.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, board members, parents, teachers, administrators, and honorable officials. My name is Anna King, and this is my colleague, Martin Burke, and we are the cosponsors of the Animation Club at Churchland High School, home of the truckers. We want to thank you for this opportunity to share some exciting news from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. For the first time, the Virginia High School League launches its Film Festival for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, the league's first all-new competition in sixteen years. Prior to the introduction of Scholastic Bowl in nineteen ninety-eight, the last program to be added was theater in nineteen thirty-one. The V H S L Film Festival turns the spotlight on truly independent films created by students. This Film Festival requires students to develop a variety of skills and supports the Virginia Department of Education's Television and Media Production Curriculum, the International Baccalaureate Film Curriculum, and the Virginia S O L for Media Literacy. The V H S L Film Festival will be held in Richmond, and forty short films, including narratives, documentaries, animations, experimentals, and commercials, public service announcements, will be screened with filmmakers competing for top honors awarded by the grand jury, as well as the Audience Choice Award. In addition to screenings, the two-day event will include events that are open to the public: discussion forums and panels, filmmaker questions and answers, a red carpet event, and award ceremony where festival results will be announced. One school will be crowned state champion in filmmaking for each category.
Good evening, school board. So, while Ms. King has already announced this great inaugural event that the V H S L is launched, has launched this year, I wanted to tell you about our involvement at Churchland High School. She's correcting, stating all the facts that this is the first year that they've had this Film Festival, and we are excited to announce that the Churchland High School Film Club that Ms. Madison Novak is a member of, and this is her mother, Ms. Novak, thank you all for being here, and the Animation Club that Ms. King and I sponsor, Mr. Burke, we're very pleased to share with the board that we submitted four films to this year's inaugural Film Festival. And for the Animation Club that we sponsor, this was quite a feat because there was April first deadline, and normally the Animation Club takes two more months past that to finish an animated film. So, and then you all know we have snow days, quite a few snow days. So, I'm just here to share that there's a group of students at Churchland High School, both in the Animation Club and the Film Club, that really worked hard to participate in this Film Festival. The Film Club submitted films to the narrative, experimental, and the commercial PSA categories, while the Animation Club naturally submitted a film to the animation category. I can really only speak about the details of our club, I'm sure Madison, if she wants to, can share some more, but our club members shot over twenty-one frames of animation to produce our five-minute film. And as you all may know, students to be that focused on one thing is quite remarkable. Okay, twenty-one shots, it's twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-one hundred shots is quite a feat for them to sustain their attention. We're excited to announce, Ms. King and I, that the Animation Club was selected as one of the finalists for this year. So, we're excited about that, yeah. So, while we're here primarily to share with the board what my church calls a praise report, we call this a praise report, we also are trying to just raise awareness that the only thing that's lacking to get all of the students and the parents and all those involved to the Film Festival on May twenty-ninth and May thirtieth are finances. And so, we really would like to bring all the students, all thirty students there, to Richmond to enjoy the fruits of their labors. I think it would be life-changing for them to see all the work that they've worked on now culminating and being a part of this major event. And you guys are, ladies, guys and ladies are certainly invited to come in Richmond to be with us. I think there's one thing that Ms. King would like-
Your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
Hold on just a minute.
Yeah, yes, sir, I apologize, that happens in my classroom, too. I'll talk to you. So-
You got another minute.
Thank you, sir. So, to conclude, Ms. King, I believe, has available for you all a link to where you can see the film, if you would like to see it on the film website that shows the film. And again, we appreciate any support you can help us with to bring the thirty students like Madison and her mom up to Richmond for that Film Festival. So, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, would you, is she allowed to say?
Mr. Parent?
Well, I guess we probably will be seeing the Academy Award Churchland High School animation, so congratulations. I know that you're here to share your story, which is a great story, but also you're here to ask for funding. My question is, have you had any fundraising events that would help, and how much money will be needed to take all thirty students and parents to Richmond? Do you have a goal?
Yes, sir. To answer the first question, we are in the planning stages of having a screening night where we're going to invite folks from the community and family members to come watch the films that the Film Club, and the Animation Club, and charge a nominal fee for folks to come in and support us. But I think that might just kind of scratch the surface. We're thinking with the three line items, transportation, entry into the Film Fest, and for a hotel, is, we're looking at maybe about fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes.
Dr. Beckto, you're here. In your student activity fund, I know that there are monies that possibly could be reallocated to take care of this, is that possible?
It is possible that they already have a small fund that they are going to add money to through their fundraising, but we are also looking to give them some money through our athletic funds since this is a Virginia High School League-
Right, that's what I was-
Yes, sir.
A legitimate expense, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We are planning to help them.
Okay, thank you.
Rem Pottillo?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. I just want to congratulate you on the great work that you're doing, and I also want to hear from the young lady, if that's possible, Mr. Chairman, looks like she has something she wanted to say.
Hi, I'm Madison Novak. I am part of the Film Club at Churchland High School, and I am also in the magnet program for theater there. The films that we submitted were all student-directed, we meet once a week, and the fact that we only had to take a couple of retakes of some shots in the films, it makes me so proud to be part of that and to be able to feel the satisfaction of maybe getting submitted and getting picked to go there. And I just think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do that.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. I simply want to say that sometimes above all the noise and all the negativity, it just inspires me as a board member to see you all come and present and tell us about the wonderful things that you're doing, and I am so appreciative, and I know the rest of the board members are as well, and I appreciate all of your hard work and everything you do to make us proud to be board members in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
I also thank you for coming and sharing. I just had a question, if there are funds available in the athletic fund, what is the fundraising for?
No, there's some. Yeah, it would be all, because we don't know quite all of the expenses that are going to be needed, but their fundraising to help with the transportation is the first thing that they were concerned about.
Okay, so is it possible, then, that we could get an accurate account of exactly how much it's going to cost and how much is coming from the athletic fund?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. What Dr. Whitaker just said just got me thinking a little bit. Transportation, what are you looking at? Are you looking at renting an outside bus or what?
Well, the only issue that we're running into is that it is a two-day event, it starts Friday and carries over to Saturday where we hope to be finalists at the final screening. And so, you know, I guess we're concerned to get a bus from the school district, we'll require that driver to stay overnight or perhaps travel back and forth. We haven't looked into that option yet. Chartering a bus was kind of like option B because we know that's a large expenditure. And so, then option C was to maybe even consider carpooling, so.
I was going to say fifteen hundred and chartering a bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. I'm looking through the general fund expenditures by category that was a part of our budget report, and there is a line item in here for field trips. I don't know what the restrictions are for the use of this money that's sitting here in the general fund, but I would wonder if we could use some of this money that's sitting in our fund right now.
You're looking for an impromptu response?
No, I'm putting it out there.
You're putting it out there, but I don't think anyone can answer because they don't, he doesn't know what his obligations are unless he looks at them.
Correct.
Okay, so that's something-
But I think that would be, Dr. Bracy, that's something we can look at.
Sure, we will look into it.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just to respond to that, when we've had groups come before the board before to request funding in addition to what may be already available through the school or through the sports fund, they usually come with a document, with documentation of exactly what they need in terms of cost for transportation, accommodations, et cetera. So, before we can talk about moving funds around, I think we would need that documentation.
Yes, ma'am. I can certainly provide that.
Mr. Nance?
I've already answered my question.
Rem Fleming?
Just make sure that we know how we can personally make contributions as well, okay?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no more cues to speak, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Good evening, honorable board members, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Bridgman. I was here a couple months ago, I'm a school bus driver for Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm going to put it out there again, yes, I'm here to talk about some things that are not so pleasing to some people, but I don't, I'm talking about safety for our students on these special needs buses, again. And two months ago, a lot of people were concerned about that, but nothing's been done, you know? If anything, things have gotten worse. Safety issues that are being ignored, they're forcing bus drivers, I'm a wheelchair bus driver, there are other wheelchair bus drivers, to transport students in wheelchairs that their locking mechanisms don't work, there are no seat belts on the chair, but those are, you know, mandated by the Department of Education. Today, I was on the phone for forty-five minutes with a, Mr. Michael Brown, and he has headed transportation for the Department of Education. And I asked him questions because I'm telling my office what's going on, but they're still making me take these children to school. The issue, number one, is with them, because if I'm putting a wheelchair on a lift that's going to go about eight foot up in the air, and I'm down here, and their lock doesn't work, what is keeping them on the lift? There was a situation with a student where she normally was not in a wheelchair, she got a loner chair, and that loner chair, first of all, when I went to pick her up, the loner chair was, I didn't even know she was in a wheelchair, so I was very surprised at that. Usually there's documentation or paperwork or something letting me know that, but it didn't happen. So, they, I called in right away, they said, "Transport her," and I said, "She doesn't have a lap belt, the wheels are sliding when I'm locking it down," and they said, "Transport anyway." So, they continued to tell me to transport anyway, per our transportation coordinator from our safety coordinator in transportation, is who I was communicating with. And that's who I'm supposed to communicate with, and other special needs drivers are supposed to communicate with her if there's any problem with any kind of adaptive equipment or anything on that bus. That's what I was told. We're also, the special needs bus drivers are also transporting regular students with our special needs students in order to cover runs. But the fact is, you know, federal, I mean, here's a Virginia law for transportation, and if you're taking a special needs bus, then you have an I E P and it's a requirement. It's not a requirement, then you're not supposed to be riding a special needs bus. It's the law. But nobody wants to listen to me because I'm just a bus driver, and now I'm a troublemaker because I'm trying to put safety first, not only for, you know, the student that's riding, but the other students, the monitor on the bus, and myself, because, you know, I too work for Portsmouth and I deserve a safe working environment, you know? And they deserve a safe ride to school, that's the law. They have rights, and they're just, it's a mess. And I was here today, you know, to bring it to your attention again, and let you know that nothing's changed, and being forced to do something that you know is absolutely wrong is- And being forced to do something that you know is absolutely wrong is, it's just really appalling to me. And if I ask questions, I get a rude answer back. I even told them, here's our training manual, and I have a couple of these, I can give to a couple of you guys, but this is a training manual from the Department of Education for safe loading and transportation of children using adaptive equipment. And, I mean, you could look through this and everything that I said is true, I have documentation of it, I wrote it up, I turned it in. But I'm getting no answers and that's why I'm here. And we're continuing to go to meetings until we get some help. Everybody was sick last time, but nothing's been done. There's no committee, no groups, no communication with any bus drivers or monitors when you guys sat there two months ago and said that we need some help. And we need some help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bracy. Would like to respond to that before I call on board members. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Harrell, I appreciate you bringing these matters before us tonight. And I don't, I can't remember if that was the two-month, within the two-month period, you know, I've been here two months, so I can't.
You weren't here that meeting.
Okay, all right, well, that's good.
That was like, you know, you just got here, so.
Okay, all right. Now, I believe this is something that will be addressed because this is serious and safety is one of the main priorities. I'm big on safety matters throughout the division. Now, I believe you have a meeting scheduled tomorrow.
I do.
With Mr. Steele. And I think at that time, we will address it, he will take all this information that you shared tonight and even more if you have it.
I do.
And we will definitely take measures from that. And he's over that department and I assure you that something will be done about that.
Right, thank you.
Immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Reverend Patillo?
Thank you Reverend Chair. Ms. Harrell, thank you again for being brave enough to come forward with your concerns. Dr. Bracy and Mr. Chairman, we've been addressing this issue numerous times since I've been on the board since January. And I have trust in all of our staff and they work very hard, but I think it's time we start holding them accountable for what they're telling us they're doing. And I would hope that we could receive some type of communication this week saying that these issues are being taken care of and not just the problems that they're doing, being done. Because we come back every month with the same issues and same concerns and it's time we start holding all of our staff accountable for what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
Thank you Mrs. Harrell for coming again for the board. We have a special needs grandchild in Virginia Beach and it is a special needs bus that picks up Ben in the morning and brings Ben home in the afternoon. I don't understand why there is, and maybe there has been, but I think Ellen, you're here tonight, I don't understand how, and maybe you can clarify that, the coordination between special ed, because it is an IEP, it's written in their IEP, why there cannot be coordination with the Office of Special Ed and the Office of Transportation? Now, I know Dr. Bracy is just getting here, but this should not happen. A child who has special needs needs to be on a special needs bus and these issues have got to be addressed. We don't have a choice. And I don't understand, I mean, you've been before this board, we were promised that this was going to be taken care of and here you're back again tonight, which is inexcusable. And I apologize for that because we want to make sure that all of our students are taken care of, most assuredly our special needs children. And so I hope that Dr. Bracy and his team can work together with the Office of Special Education and the Department of Transportation, this will be resolved. And I'd love for you to come back and tell me that it was resolved so that we can have a happy end.
I would really like to do that.
I'd love that too, thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you Chairman Bridford. I was going to say what Reverend Patillo said, we've been hearing about this for months at this point. Discussions have been had, assurances have been made and we're still in April, almost May, and we're still hearing the same thing that we heard September, October and November. So I would like to say, Dr. Bracy, thank you for having a meeting, thank you for taking this head-on. I look forward to having accountability and changes made for the betterment of our students because every child deserves to be safe, every driver needs to be safe, these are our children that we have to take care of. So I just want to say thank you, I look forward to a resolution.
Reverend Fleming?
I have to say first, Ms. Harrell, thank you. I heard something that you said and I have to stop because of who I am and tell you when you said I'm just a bus driver, that concerned me because Dr. Bechtall and those persons who receive perfect attendance, without you, they would never have those perfect attendants. You are very significant and any concerns and questions that you have, like any other job, you deserve to ask. And I want to say, Dr. Bracy, that if people cannot comfortably work for Portsmouth Public School and they are harassed for asking questions, something needs to be done immediately. Because what we want to do is, we want people to know that this is the best school division to work for.
Yes.
But, so I had to correct you and say you are a bus driver, not just a bus driver. You are a bus driver and we do appreciate you. And I too look forward to hearing an update as it relates to the concerns that you lifted. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Bridford. My comments are not reflective or directed anywhere near Dr. Bracy with regards to he came in really at the beginning of all this. I've heard the comment, you know, I hope that it's going to be addressed. This has been supposedly being addressed since August. I'm to a point where I don't want to hear it being addressed anymore, I want it fixed. This is, this has gone on too long. Bus drivers have made suggestions of how they think would better serve. I had made a suggestion as well a couple of months ago. I've also made comments about loss of confidence. And I am, and I think this is probably an appropriate time to bring this up as well, we've heard this on and off and I'm concerned, not just from bus drivers, but from others as well, this environmental attitude or situation that comes up where people don't feel comfortable coming forward. We've heard this now from bus drivers, we've heard this from other personnel as well. I don't know if we've made the connection yet or not, but when, it doesn't matter if it's a teacher, if it's a teacher assistant, if it's a janitor, if it's a bus driver or whoever it is, if the work environment is not conducive for people to be able to do their best, then that's going to affect the education of children in the classroom. So this has been going on since August that we've been aware of, this has been going on for years, on and off. It's not time now to have it addressed, but it is time and it's long overdue of having it fixed. And so I concur with my fellow board members, I do want to have a report, but not just a report of what was discussed or our plans, but a report of solutions of what needs to be done with the changes in the department and where we go forward from here. Because if we don't, if we don't, I would put a five-dollar bill down that if we don't start making some of these changes, then we're not going to have anyone to transport or we're going to have a lot less bus drivers next fall. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you Chairman Bridford. I wanted to say to Ms. Harrell, thank you for coming and it does take a lot of nerve to do what you do. And I think more people should do what you're doing. But I also know that Dr. Bracy came in on the tail end and he had said that he wanted the opportunity to correct what has been presented and we need to give him that opportunity to do that. And normally when we ask him to do something, it is done. So I have all the confidence that when you come back to us, it will be taken care of. But if it's not, please do come back to us and let us know. But I appreciate you coming. And there are many people in the work environment and it does not mean that you have a bad supervisor or that they're mean or whatever, it just takes a lot to get up and talk about the place that you work.
That's right.
Because in the back of your mind, you do fear that someone would use it against you. So rest assured, they will not use that against you.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To piggyback on what Reverend Fleming said, I was raised by a bus driver, so that's cool with me. I've got some questions and don't take this as being smart, okay, or having an attitude. You mentioned a locking device on the wheelchair.
Yes.
Okay, is that?
It's a brake.
Okay, is that provided by the division or by the owner of the wheelchair?
The owner of the wheelchair, it comes with the wheelchair. It must have a working locking system and it must have a seat belt.
Okay.
That wheelchair.
So.
So the wheels don't move, the locks have to lock into the wheels so that when you're, we have a four-point locking system and you lock it on and you crank it down to make sure that it's secure.
Right, you don't want to.
But what happens is the wheels move.
Right.
And they're not supposed to.
Okay. So if student A has this situation today, unless it's repaired, it's the situation throughout, correct?
Correct, and we're not supposed to transport when it's broken.
I guess Ms. Jordano, my question to find out is, is there assistance available to, for parents to fix these chairs or, you know? It's a twofold problem, you see what I'm saying? The consumer of our services, of course, who may have an IEP or what have you, and then the safe transportation as such.
Can I help you with that a little bit?
Yeah.
Or you've got somebody else?
Ms. Jordano, come up and please.
What's our recourse, I guess, if we have children arriving on unsafe equipment?
We, I know of one particular case that we've been working on and we have contacted the parent, we have also contacted the company that is servicing, because the children come with their own wheelchairs.
Right.
So we're contacting the company, the company has come out several times, the child has been off of the bus several times as well and the parent has been bringing them in because of that reason, because safety is such a concern to us. We have responded, I'm not sure of any other cases that have come to my attention. And even this week it came to our attention and immediately I have staff that go out there that check it as well. So I think that's something we need to have more discussions about because my understanding even this week was that the child's wheelchair was safe and he should not be on the bus. So we will follow up again with the company, but we felt like we had addressed that.
Is there any way you can get with Mr. Steele, see if you can be at that meeting tomorrow with them?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I really wanted a private meeting, so I called a meeting, if that's okay, we could do another.
Hold on, hold on, Dr. Whitaker?
To follow up on what Mr. Nance was asking about, if a student has a disability and is using a wheelchair, doesn't that student typically have SSI or disability that would allow for funds to repair the chair?
They may, a lot of the children also have Medicaid, so that's something that the parent works with them and you're correct, that's something that the parent will work with. And the mom is working with the company on that, they're looking at getting a larger chair as well. So there's been follow-up there, but there have been times we have felt that the wheelchair is unsafe and we have asked the parent, he cannot ride on the bus and can you please bring him in? So that is our recourse for now, that we will not let those wheelchairs on the buses because we feel that is a safety issue.
So the school system typically doesn't give assistance to the parents with trying to resolve those issues?
We do, not financial per se, but we, my OT staff will go out, they've worked with the parents to get with their Medicaid. In this particular case, we've been the one calling the company as a matter of fact. We've even said if we need the company to come repeatedly, we as a department will pay for that, which is really something to help out because the child's coming to our school. We do not want any wheelchair issues, we don't want any safety issues, that is our number one concern. So I do have staff that will assist the parent as well, we've gone to the home different times and in this particular case, we've gone to the home to check the wheelchair and talk with the parent.
Can we find out as a board how many children we're talking about in terms of problems with wheelchairs?
Yes.
And identify those and go from there in terms of how the school system can assist the parents with getting these repairs done?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you Chairman Bridford and I want to thank Board Member Nance for bringing that up because it really just made it crystal clear to me. See, I'm thinking from the report that the school division was not providing the correct equipment or the wheelchairs. This is the responsibility of the parents and if they don't have the proper equipment, then they are not supposed to ride the bus. So, I mean, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, they're not supposed to ride the bus, that's correct.
Okay, so if you go to pick them up and they don't have the proper equipment, do you make that?
I'm told you're going to ride anyway.
You're told to bring them anyway?
Yes, I have in the past been able to make that decision under different management, but I'm no longer allowed to make that decision. And as far as the school goes, she's talking about one instance, there's many more children that have problems and that's only what she knows of. That's because our department tells her, I don't tell her. I've seen her and I've met her and we have worked on one child, but however, it takes over twenty-four hours if I have a problem and when it's addressed, I've been brushed off. OT is not our transportation department, they kind of look at a chair, I think that it should be collaborated. But instead, our department doesn't do anything, they allow the school to make the decision and then back to me.
Okay, well, to me, if there is a rule that they don't ride unless the equipment is safe, that's a liability issue for the school as well. So I would think that you would certainly be able to make that decision if they don't have the proper, because you're there and then the parent would be responsible for getting them there until the equipment is corrected, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And actually on that one instance today, I was just reading, following up on an email on that, that was our question, if the wheelchair is not working prior to the child getting on in the morning, then he should not be getting on the bus. Because that is a liability issue. If there are others, then we certainly want to know about that and I will follow up as Dr. Whitaker has asked because now others have come to our attention. And we do, I send my staff out immediately, we stop what we're doing because safety is, that is our, that's the thing that keeps us up at night.
Okay, so one of the primary problems, if they don't have the equipment, if you're there, you should be able to tell them they can't ride and you're saying you can't do that, Nance.
Okay, I'm going to ask you not to respond, please, because we can't be going back and forth.
Okay, I asked her the question.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I asked her the question, thank you so much.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Bridford. Two questions, something that dawned on me while I'm sitting here and maybe you may be able to answer or someone, even Dr. Bracy possibly. If we have a special education bus that's transporting students, is every special education bus, is it supposed to have an aide on it? bus, is it supposed to have an aide on it as well? Is that law? And if so, do every one of our special ed buses have an aide?
I don't know the transportation requirement if that is. My understanding is that there is an aide. We have... My understanding is that there is a monitor on the bus.
Okay, so... But I'm seeing some heads that's saying no.
Right.
So we got to look into that now because that's federal law. Secondly, it really sounds like there is a miscommunication problem here. So if, let's say, Ms. Harrell here reports to Transportation, her supervisor, that students coming on and it's a faulty wheelchair equipment, do they report to you about this problem or how do you get involved in this? I mean, I would assume that a bus driver doesn't... They don't call you.
Correct.
So who is supposed to call you? Because it sounds like if you're just finding out about one or two or a couple situations, but if there's multiple over and over and over, it sounds like you're not getting the report. So who is supposed to report that to you?
The... When this all started, we actually had... We wanted to put a process in place, a written form that the bus driver would complete. It would go to the principal and the form then would go to the Transportation, but we also wanted a copy as well so that we could respond to that.
And you're not getting those?
I don't... I'm only receiving what I had gotten through an email through a principal this week. I did not get a written copy of a form because I don't think that was filled out right away, but we still had a... The principal emailed us the incident that occurred this week and so that morning I had a staff go out there.
Okay, so there's... But there's a proper policy that's in place supposedly?
We had put a proceed... Yes, and I think that's something we need to clarify in-house between ourselves to be sure we're following our own policy.
That's right. Make sure that it's being followed.
Correct.
Dr. Bracy?
Thank you for sharing that. And I think, I guess from this point, what we can do with the meeting tomorrow, I want to make sure that I have as many of the key players in that meeting so that we can get this resolved from the Transportation to... With the special ed and with you, Ms. Harrell, so that we can make sure that any other concerns that you have, we can address those. But as Dr. Whitaker said, we want to make sure that this is not a division-wide issue. So we want to make sure that this is resolved. So I know, I think I heard you mention something about a private meeting.
Yes. Because I'm bringing in another bus driver, a couple of bus drivers with me that have the same type of issues that we have expressed it to our office.
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, sir. Sorry. We've expressed our concerns to our office and they've been ignored and we are coming to you guys so we can get some help.
Okay.
And I would rather... We wanted to express them and be able to freely express our concerns rather than being so guarded and it's uncomfortable with anybody in my department to talk to them.
All right, well, at this meeting, you shouldn't feel that way.
Okay.
You shouldn't feel that way. Feel free to talk freely because we want to get this resolved. You know, I don't... I would dare to think that any of the staff at the meeting would hold anything against you or anything of that nature. Because we want... I want everybody at the table so this can be resolved. You've heard what the board members have said.
Yes.
This has gone on long enough, so that's why I want everybody that's there that can make some decisions on this immediately.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more requests, thank you. Next speaker, Madam Claire.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. We Americans have an abiding belief in and a commitment to the principles of a constitutional republic. These principles are exhibited in our relationship with the government of our schools and our daily interactions with one another. These principles are necessary for our society to function, but it doesn't come naturally. It must be taught and experienced. Where do we learn these principles? Where do we practice them and experience their application? And how do we learn to value the necessary investment of time it takes to become engaged citizens? The first place is in our Christian home, the second place in our church, and the third place in our schools. Our schools shape students' sense of civic identity through the lessons of history, student government, team activities, and students' daily interactions with each other. Students are taught that the principles of the constitutional republic apply equally to everyone regardless of race, religion, or economic status. Our school board is a key mechanism in forming the relationship between education and our form of government. You can actually increase government participation by inviting citizens from the community to become more involved in the schools and empowering them to participate in the decision-making process. The National School Board Association publication, the Key Work of School Boards Guidebook, shows how school boards, as the elected governing authority for the local schools, can involve us every step of the way to establish a vision for the schools, adopt standards that define the level of performance expected, hold the school division accountable for achieving those standards, and ensure continuous improvement to meet the district's vision and goals. Convening a town hall meeting would give us an opportunity to develop a broader view around school issues. The climate for us to be involved is weak and it has weakened the decision-making process for our schools. The schools have an advantage by being close to home. It is a good deal easier to attend a meeting at our neighborhood schools than at City Hall. Only by inviting us to help answer the big questions about what counts can the public schools give we, the people, the kind of education we want for our children. Thanks for listening.
Good evening, Bridgeford. Dr. Bracy, honorable members. You know, the more I come to these, the more it's like going to school because it surely is a learning experience. On the school bus issue, I agree with him. Because when my son was at Norcom, he used to call Transportation when they were 45 minutes late on a bus and get a nasty response. And the reason they talk to us over the phone like that is because they're not standing face to face. You've had a transportation issue for a long time. Your head's been in the ground for a long time. Secondly, this budget, we better start making some very serious choices. This train wreck that we're in right now that's heading down the road, thanks to our city council and the budget, we better get in front of this public affairs because your opinion or what you feel like out in the public is horrible. This train wreck is getting ready to come to an end. These monies, these budgets that you have put out there, these positions that you want to hire, that's a hot topic within the community. Something to just take, you know, stop thinking about. Mr. Patel, you was at the golf tournament today, correct?
Yes.
I appreciate you coming out there and showing face. Starbase Victory put on an awesome tournament. More people need to come out and attend. It was awesome. I played in it. Best time of my life watching those kids take pictures with everyone, shoot their rockets off, and do everything else. You know, I've been listening and I was made aware today that today I am a minority in the city of Portsmouth. A minority. Cool. I was a minority in the South Bronx. Never thought too much about it. Started putting all the... I keep hearing all this about black and white in this community. And it's not about black and white. But I was asked at my son's school, that was my biological son. It's the first time I have a 23-year-old and my son is 16. First time in my life I've ever been asked that that was my biological child. Based off skin color is what it was. This is coming from your schools with your employees. I don't pay too much to it. Kind of... I laughed it off because I knew where it was coming from. But if you want to talk about racial diversity and keep us in harmony, you better fix that. Next thing, I heard talking about suspensions and wanting to make changes. I got news for you. I couldn't care less if you suspend them. I couldn't care less if they hit the streets because you cannot sacrifice the many for the few. My son had a pair of his glasses broken last week trying to avoid a fight. That's $500 out of my poor pocket. Now, if I told my son, hey, defend yourself, he's suspended. You guys get to get control. I don't want disruptive kids in my school with my son. If they can't behave and this is a multiple-time offense, sorry about your luck. I'm not paying my taxes for you to babysit a kid that's a delinquent. That falls on the parents also. It comes from our home first. I don't ask you to babysit my child. And no other parent in here or watching this should ask the same of anyone else either. But please do not put children in our schools and continue to feel sorry for them when they are continued delinquent. My son doesn't need his glasses broken. You all aren't paying for it. It's not fair to me. If you don't have enough control in your schools, then we better figure out a different way to go about this. You know, I applaud you all for trying to work for some serious time crunching and some serious issues. And it's time for us to make some decisions. If the budget comes back that we're not fully funded, which it could possibly come back, all I ask you is don't bite that apple that you tried biting last year with our education part to it. That's a sour apple and you know it through the community. Please continue to do your jobs to the best of your abilities. Continue to make the parents change their thought patterns of you guys. Because until you start changing the community, you're doing nothing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Parent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mutlow, for coming before the board. Couple of questions. You've mentioned this train wreck getting ready to happen and the board, this board needs to get ahead of positions. What positions are you referring to?
Everything that was put in the budget with the PIO, the assistance, those positions that... As much as I know that you've put a lot of these on hold, I can't tell... I've told people, no, those positions are put on hold right now. But until... Because it's still in the budget, it's still perception that those are the positions that you're hiring. And that came... And that's the same perception that you're having on city council also. They think that you're hiring is, what is it, grant writer, PIO, then you have an athletic director, leather director, trainers, all these positions. The perception that I'm hearing is that we are too top-heavy in this school district. And if we are, the last thing that we want to do is hire more... If you listen to the city council meetings, that has come across.
I know. Hold on. Go ahead.
The second question is, and you don't have to answer it, I just want to know the category. Who asked you the question about your biological son? Was that a... Did that come from a student?
Guidance Council Secretary.
Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me get this straight, Mr. Mutlow, and I appreciate you coming. You're concerned about a public information officer, but in your speech you said we need to have better public affairs? Is that correct?
I'm not worried about the position. I know what your guys' board was. What you're seeing out in the community is that they're thinking that you're hiring its position at $100,000. The perception is that. I know you're not hiring right now. It's temporary on hold. Same thing with them. But according, when you talk to the people that look at the budgets, that's what they're seeing. So until... I don't know how you fix that, the problem of perception.
Well, first of all, the people who are spewing the budget thing wherever you're hearing it at City Hall or what have you, they're probably not experts in working with children of poverty, okay? If you look at our free and reduced rate in our city, which they're responsible for economic conditions of our city, the great majority of our students are in poverty. And it does take grant writers to get additional monies to work with them. And the train wreck, if you will, is going to be if they don't fund the budget. Because when you take the special population, it's direct correlation of incarceration rates with reading rate, lack of reading rates and what have you. And they may be an expert at spending a dollar today, but they're not going to care about us having to spend 10 or 20 tomorrow. Another thing is the tax rate. I'm very sorry that the tax rate may have to increase. I certainly apologize for that. However, comma, approximately four years ago, the tax rate, the property tax rate was reduced by five cents, the rate itself. And regional-wide, there was no great outcry to reduce property tax rates at that point. And that five cents, and I'm not lecturing you, I'm trying to give you some behind-the-scenes stuff as well. That five cents has compounded itself. And this school division has suffered consistently since then. And we need a grants writer. We need a public information officer to tell our story because there's not enough hours in the day for me to go out and to spread the good word. You know, I'm a disciple of education, but I can't do it 24/7. And I'm sorry I wasn't at the golf tournament today, but I'm caring for my old mother at home. I don't have money for somebody to come in and take care of her. So, you know, we all have lives and what have you. And the great train wreck is a lie. It may be... The train may be wrecking, but it's based on lies. And I thank you for doing what you do and volunteering and coming before us today. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you Chairman Bridgeford and again, thank you, Mr. Mutlow, for coming and telling us about the train wreck and all of that. And I would dare say that as far as the budget is concerned, I talked with many people. I have not heard one mention the PIO or whatever else or anything about a train wreck. I've heard them say they need to fund the schools. Over the last eight years or whatever, we have been cut like $22 million. We are trying to get this budget back where we can get the teachers' assistance back, we can get some teachers in. And yes, we want to tell our story. Because tonight, if you watch the students that came, that's a story that we never hear. Because all the thing that we get in the paper is negative. Everything negative. So I don't know what group of people you may be listening to, I probably can name them all, one by one. And you probably know we can name... Because it's the same cast of characters that we hear from every year negatively about Portsmouth Public Schools. But I don't get that and I talk to a lot of people and they are very much in favor of this budget funding the schools. I appreciate your commitment because I see you out there at the expo. I saw you on Facebook at the golf tournament and wish I could be there like Mr. Nance. I do work full-time. But I appreciate you, but I don't see a train wreck. Some people will consistently and continually feed you the negativity. But we're going to do the very best that we can for these children regardless.
I agree.
So thank you for sharing that with us.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mutlow, again, thank you for coming and speaking. And concerning the budget, whoever's been talking hasn't obviously looked at the entire budget because many of the positions that we've asked for are not the top-heavy positions, but as Mrs. Williams said, revolve around instructional positions in the classroom to strengthen the reading and the math skills of... to strengthen the reading and the math skills of our students, which were desperately needed. Secondly, in terms of you mentioned something about minority status and I can't let this go because I'm a trained sociologist. And when we use the term minority, there are two ways to use it. You can be a numerical minority, that is, in terms of your representation in the population. But you can also be a social minority. And when we talk about social minorities, we're talking about groups of people who have suffered disadvantages in our society. And if you look at social minorities such as African Americans, Hispanics, Native Americans, et cetera, those are the groups that historically have been disadvantaged economically, educationally, et cetera. And what we are trying to do as a school board in the city of Portsmouth is make sure that not only social minority students receive the education that they should receive, but all students receive the education that they need to receive. And in order to do that, we have to fund the schools adequately. There's no way around it. You have to fund the schools adequately in order to do that so that all of us can rise together as a city. Thank you.
I agree.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Muttlow. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kirby Steining.
Chairman Bridgeford, members of the school board, and Dr. Bracy. As you're probably aware, WVCTV hosted a town hall meeting last month at Christopher Newport University. In a CNU survey, the number one concern of respondents was school funding. The phrase fifth in per capita income but 39th in funding for education was voiced several times. However, letters to the editor consistently complained that real estate taxes are too high and the results are too low. Not enough funding or too much? Which is it? Free public education is mandated by the Virginia Constitution, Article 8. Of course, requiring it is not the same as funding it. That's what the standards of quality funding formula is about. There are several major funding streams involved. General funds, lottery funds, sales tax receipts, federal funds, and a local effort which is heavily dependent on local property taxes. In 2014, Virginia allocated $5.94 billion for public education with 88.4% of that coming from general funds. Here's how I, an outsider, understand the SOQ funding. You divide the average daily attendance by a class size of 25 or so to calculate the number of teachers required. Add some principals and specialized instructors to get a final personnel count. Multiply the count by the average teacher salary, throw in a few fudge factors, and that's the total dollar amount to meet the SOQ, basic instructional needs for the district. The general fund supplies 55% of those needs with a local effort providing the additional 45%. But that percentage is adjusted based on the composite index of a local ability to pay. For 2015, Portsmouth's local contribution is only 26.8% instead of 45% because basically we can't afford the property taxes that will be required to fully fund the standards of quality by ourselves, so the Commonwealth kicks in the rest. The SOQ funding formula is staff based rather than student based. Virginia is only one of four states whose funding formula is staff based. If a local school district wishes to provide more than basic education, it must pay 100% of those additional costs. So what are those additional costs? Well, I think all of Dr. Bracy's team is extra, as are the front office staff at the local schools, school nurses, janitors, resource officers, et cetera. Unfortunately, the SOQ formula also assumes that all students have the same educational background and needs. A single parent African American kindergarten student in Portsmouth is considered to be identical in needs to a white student from Falls Church with two college educated parents who hold professional jobs. This funding strategy is also not aligned with the SOLs because they have a goal of above average proficiency for all students, at least in math and reading, rather than just basic skills. Here are some statistics to consider. As recently as 2013, the starting salary for teacher in Portsmouth was the lowest of all 44 cities in the Commonwealth and fourth lowest compared to the 98 counties. You've changed that since. SOQ funding in 2014 was $4,803 per pupil, a 16.3% decrease in inflation adjusted dollars since 2009. Total funding per pupil in 2014 in Portsmouth was $10,470 compared to $11,462 in Virginia Beach. This difference of only 10% between these two localities brings into question whether the SOL scores are actually correlated with funding at all. Finally, although the local effort consumed 96% of the real estate taxes collected across the Commonwealth in 2005, the proposed 2015 Portsmouth City budget allocates only 41.1% of the property taxes to school funding. The school board should not take all the heat for the proposed tax increase. So if you feel the public schools in Portsmouth are underfunded, what are your options? You could ask city council for a bigger show of the real estate pie, but past history seems to say that that's unlikely to succeed. You could ask Johnny Jono, Louise Lucas, or Bobby Scott for more funding, but the outlook there is poor as well. How about considering a couple of out of the box alternatives to raise additional funds? Scrap the SOQ formula and replace it with student based funding. More funds for students at greater risk. A 2006 study estimated that Portsmouth would gain approximately $10 million under such a formula. How do you feel about giving local school boards independent taxing authority rather than the annual trip to city council? I realize both the options are not quick fixes and require developing community census before going down a very difficult legislative road. In conclusion, given the limits of the current SOQ funding formula, where does a school board expect to get the additional funds in the future to provide an exceptional education for each student in Portsmouth? Or do you already have the funds you need? Next month, my comment.
Would you bring your comments to a close?
One more sentence.
Thank you.
My comments next month will be on the top of SOL tests tentatively titled, Sponges or Learning? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Steining. Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we going to get a copy of that like we did last month after? Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's it. That was it. That was the man.
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Good evening. My name is Contral Devon. I reside in Newport. I want to start this evening off by saying I think you all are doing an excellent job. Dr. Bracy, you came in some very hostile situations and I think you handled them very respectfully and you made your city proud. Dr. Whitaker, again, I just really, I really rejoice with you for making history with your husband. I see you sitting there and you are wonderful. I love the education, the professionalism, everything about you. I'm proud you made it. I came here tonight to say thank you to Ms. Costella Williams because a parent contacted me who was going through a lot of duress due to a very extensive suspension to the point that her child was going to be displaced and put into alternative school with his first suspension. And it wasn't even a fistfight. And when she called me, she was really, really going through and had been up all night long because one thing a mother hates to hear is that her child has been suspended, especially when you have invested in that child. That is something that you first concern is what's going to be the outcome. And Ms. Costella reached out to her after hours and really you gave her peace of mind. And I thank you for that because when the call came to me, I was like, okay, what do I do from here? Who can I call that I know has a heart for the community despite what's said and your mind, your name? Because I know when we call you, you will respond. You will not pass us on. You will personally. And that meant a lot to her and it meant a lot to me when I found out that you did contact her yourself. Thank you, Dr. Wiggins, for your timely response. That made her proud. Your voice is known, of course. And when she called me, she spoke as you did, which was, you know, funny, but in a good way. So we thank you. We thank you for standing at the front gate for our children. Continue to do that. I like the unity. I know Portsmouth City students will succeed with you all at the helm. Thank you and good night.
Hold Steel just a moment, please. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I want to thank you for coming before us and both you and Mr. Muttlow brought up the issue of suspensions and expulsions. And I've spoken on this before, but this is an issue that's dear to me. And I think as a school system, we have to be careful about why we're kicking children out of school for, you know, the reasons. And some of them are being suspended and expelled, as you said, for nonviolent offenses, sometimes first offenses. And what we know based upon the research now is that you have school districts nationwide that are looking at ways to reduce their suspensions and expulsions. When we turn children out of our schools, we have to be very careful of that choice that we're making because we have to ask ourselves, what is the alternative to them being in school? And we talk about this school to prison pipeline.
Yes, ma'am.
When you turn some of these children out onto the streets, okay, they're already at risk. You're putting them at further risk. So as a school board member, I just want to put that out there. And as a school system, that's something that we have to address. We have to address it. Other school districts are already ahead of the game with that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I want to thank Ms. Devon for recommending the parent to call because she was frustrated. She was upset. But I especially want to thank Mr. Wiggins.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I called him and told him about the situation and he got right on it. And if you call him with a problem, he will address it right away. And so I really wanted to thank him for that. And I want to add, you know, I ran on safe schools and I still run on safe schools. I don't believe in kicking the children out, but I also believe that we don't sacrifice the many for a few that are bullies and don't know how to act.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want all children to know that when they come to Portsmouth Public Schools, that that's our top priority for me as a board member because that was what I ran on, that they will be safe. I do think that we need to look at alternative education. Where they can be placed, where they still, because there are a lot of school divisions that have standing alternative schools that really work on education, I guess, sort of like they're still in some type of in school suspension. But as far as the greater population, I really don't want any child to feel that they are not safe in their school. And most kids won't speak up because they don't want to be retaliated against. But I went to a forum when I first ran and it was a student that spoke. And she touched me because she said her grandmother told her there were three places that she should feel safe. That was home, church, and school. And I kept that with me and that is my goal. But but I'm glad you called me because she was just elated after talking with Mr. Wiggins and things worked out differently. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's that's it, Madam Clerk. Okay. Next item is item number seven for discussion. Monthly report, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Thornton Nichols, Director, Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Ms. Nichols, come forward.
Good evening. Chair Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, Members of the Board, Dr. Bracy. In Dr. Taylor's absence, I will be giving her report to you all this evening. From the Office of English, Ms. Anna Cross. English and Science are collaborating with alternative writing assessments and VDOE has requested that Portsmouth Public Schools send a cross curricular team in the fall to the English SOL Institute in Newport News to share efforts that would serve as, quote, "a model for the state," according to English Supervisor Tracy Robinson. The Office of English has recommended to all schools that students should provide many opportunities to work in the Test Nav program provided by VDOE. It provides exposure and practice with the release tests, passages, and questions. Principals have been provided the Student Performance Analysis PowerPoints for all grades. These contain practice items for specific SOL strands that are weak across the state. The Office of English is celebrating April as Poetry Month. Every April, on a Poem in Your Pocket Day, people throughout the United States celebrate by carrying a poem with them and sharing it with others throughout the day. Our schools K-12 have been invited to participate and resources have been provided for teachers for great activities aligned to this genre, so please join us. Gifted and talented, Ms. Beverly Jackson. Churchill Academy Elementary School participated in Odyssey of the Mind Region Six Tournament on March 28th to 2015, and it was victorious and will now advance to the state tournament in Lorton, Virginia on April 18th, 2015. From the Office of Mathematics, Churchill Primary and Intermediate participated in a pilot of First in Math beginning in January. Students completed a variety of activities which allowed them to practice math skills. Cumulatively, the students have solved over 1.1 million problems. As a result, CPNI was ranked number 21 in the state and their sixth graders were number six in the state. Portsmouth Public Schools has received a $15,000 grant from VDOE Middle School Teacher Core Program. This grant provides funds for teacher recruitment and retention of experienced defective mathematics teachers. The VDOE will fund the Middle School Teacher Core Recruitment incentive for each of the three middle schools. And a reminder that the Grade Six Math Challenge will be held tomorrow at Victory Elementary. Science, Ms. Laura Nelson. Robotics coaches Darren Moore and Lawrence Douglas, along with two robotics students, represented Portsmouth Public Schools at the Jefferson Laboratory Workforce Roundtable Discussion with Deputy Secretary of Energy on April 9, 2015. Darren James has been accepted into the West Point STEM Workshop on May 25th through the 28th, 2015. Darren is a seventh grade student at Churchill Middle School. And Student Services, Dr. Marie Shepherd. Marketing, the DECA team, students at IC Norcom High School, one at the state level and will be attending the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida in April. The students are Shane Bullock, Retail Management; Janay Gatling, Leader Development; Alexia Trotter, Marketing Communication; Angel Thompson, Marketing Communication; Jordan Thornton, Apparel and Accessories Marketing. Also, the Business FBLA students at IC Norcom High School, one at the district level and will be attending the state competition in Reston, Virginia in April. The students are Nia Watkins, Word Processing; Kristin Moore, Insurance and Risk Management; and Jaylen Richard, Sales Presentation. Additionally, you have the Governance Minutes from IC Norcom High School's Governance Meeting in March and the Craddock Meeting or Governance Meeting was rescheduled due to the snow, so those minutes will be forthcoming to you all. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Parent?
First of all, I want to commend Mrs. Clark and I'm glad that you are still here and that Churchill Academy Elementary is going to go to the state. So kudos to you and your students for the Odyssey of the Mind. Thank you. The other question I have is, and maybe this is for Mr. Steel. The $15,000 grant that when were we awarded that grant? What was the date of the grant?
We were just notified in about the last two weeks.
Last two weeks?
Yes. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the funds are available July. Is that because we're working with HR to do that, but I believe it's July the funds become available.
And when will those funds have to be spent? What's the date? Is it a year?
I believe it's, yeah.
So, Mr. Steel, we have to go to city council to ask for approval to So, Mr. Steele, we have to go to City Council to ask for approval to use those grants, funds. Is that correct? Or not?
No, that'll be in next year's budget.
Be in next year's budget, July 1. But we have to get approval from them to use these funds, right?
We submitted a grant.
We submitted a grant budget and it's part of our overall budget for FY16. Our grant numbers, in a lot of cases, are estimates, so we need to just compare our current estimates and see if it includes an increase of 15,000 or if we do have to bump that up.
Okay, I just, the reason, my reasoning for asking this question is that I don't want us to be tied, not being able to implement because we have to get the City Council to approve it. It seems to be a pattern that we have long existed, at least the last year and a half, of when we receive a grant, we can't spend it unless City Council approves it. And I want that, I mean, I just want to make sure that that's all lumped into the 2016 budget. So July 1, we're going to be ready to go and implement this grant. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. You said so many fantastic things in there. I mean, the fact that, you know, being recognized by the state of having possibly something instructionally that could be utilized across the state, I think it's a fantastic idea. The fact of the grant that is being mentioned to attract math teachers. Just a couple of things, and I know you're in Dr. Taylor's stead and that's fine. I would like to think, or hopefully, we can take some of these things that was mentioned tonight. I mean, we keep talking about getting the word out, the positives and so forth. This was a very positive report across the board. If there was a way that we could format it to even get it on our website or something, some of these awards and things that our students have done, I think would be phenomenal. Also, too, again, it's great that we got to $15,000 grant to attract math teachers. I know for, not just here, but really here, the math teachers has been an ongoing issue and it continues in many ways. I would like for us, if we could, possibly look at contacting VSBA and seeing what other districts has done in the past or now in the future with regards to how to attract math teachers. Maybe there's other districts that have came up with something that maybe we haven't seen or looked at.
And I know locally, I have checked with my colleagues in neighboring divisions, and they are really facing the same challenges that we are. And there, if I'm recalling correctly, I believe one of them said there was some type of monetary, whether a signing bonus, but the majority of the other divisions weren't doing anything, you know, like I said, the local divisions that I spoke with. So I don't know if farther out in the state, there may be some additional ideas. But I think one of the largest problems that we face is there are not students that are going to school to become secondary mathematics teachers. And so that's really where the challenge, you know, lies, that we have to do something to really encourage the students to want to pursue that as a course in college.
Right. And that makes it challenging. And so maybe just possibly someone out there has an excellent idea that we could look at. And then lastly, Dr. Bracy, if it's possible, I know we've been talking about, we got the benchmark results for reading and math a couple of meetings back. I don't remember exactly which one. And we were told, of course, that the instructional specialist was going into schools and assisting and helping of those. I would like, if we could, at the next meeting, if we could have a printout or a report listing, I understand there's like an instructional support feedback form. And so I'd kind of like to see how that is turning out, how that's working as far as our specialists getting into the schools, and how much time they are actually spending with students as well. Thank you.
And I can certainly pass that on to Dr. Taylor. So you're interested in the feedback forms to document the amount of time that the specialists are spending working with students?
Correct. Especially, if we can, specifically the reading and the math, because I know that was an issue. But definitely looking at our middle schools as well with that.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Item eight for electronic vote, request for the approval of the Annual Special Education Plan Part B flow-through for the 2015-16 school year. Mr. Parent?
Yes, I think at our last meeting, I requested the percentage, I actually requested, and maybe I didn't make myself clear, is that what I wanted was, if you have a person that's being paid 100%, I needed the name, the position, and the amount of money. And the column, I didn't get that information. I got the name, position, and like 100%. What I needed was, what I asked for was the name, position, and how much money. So if you misunderstood what I wanted, I apologize, but I would like to have that information. I think the rest of the board would like that information as well.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Parent, I did not understand that.
I'm sorry, and I apologize. But I really would like to see where, I mean, I'm going to prove that, I'm going to prove this because I know, I'm familiar with this grant. I know it. But I really would like to see with personnel, how much money we're paying personnel with this grant.
Correct. So specifically, because I gave you the list of the names, the titles, so you're looking for each person, the exact, basically their salary.
That last column, you can, I mean, if you want to add another column, just put the amount of money that they're receiving.
Specific to each person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so basically their salary is what you're looking for?
Exactly. I'd like to see their salaries.
My apologies. No, I did not understand that.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is the place to access, but can I request also that we see what the duties and responsibilities are for the Special Education Coordinator and the four supervisors that are listed?
Okay, that's okay. But let me, this is for the pass, this flow-through matter first.
Right, okay.
And what we can do is tackle your request.
Okay.
Okay, I'm on item number eight. With board's pleasure for the approval of the flow-through.
Second?
With improper second, that we approve the Annual Special Education Plan Part B flow-through for 2015-16. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, and in relation to that, Dr. Whitaker, go ahead and make your request again so they hear you.
Yes, I'm requesting that we receive a listing of all of the responsibilities and the duties for the Special Education Coordinator, as well as the Special Education Supervisors that are listed here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine for discussion, monthly report, Human Resources, Jessica Durham, acting senior supervisor.
Good evening, Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, School Board Members, and all assembled. The Department of Human Resources has submitted a report to you, and I'll go over those items now. Interviews were held for Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction on Friday, April 17, and Monday, April 20. The Department of Human Resources will host TASPA, which is the Tideboard Association of School Personnel Administrators, the Regional Group for Human Resources Administrators in School Divisions, on April 28 in Portsmouth. As Dr. Nichols mentioned in her report, Human Resources is collaborating with Curriculum and Instruction to identify those middle school math teachers who may be eligible for the grant that's been awarded through the Virginia Department of Ed. In addition, summer school applications are now being accepted in the Department of Human Resources, and positions have been posted on our website. Transfer applications are also being accepted for the 2015-2016 school year. That ends my report, and I will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, seeing no requests to speak, go to the next item. Item number 10 for electronic vote, request for the approval of the Employee Transaction Report for April 2015, and that would include the addendum that you were just giving tonight that I asked to be added. And I'll ask the board's pleasure.
Move for approval.
It's the move and proper second that we approve the transaction report along with the addendum as presented. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
Seven yes votes, one no, one abstention. It passes.
Thank you. Item number 11, monthly report, budget and planning, Mr. Christopher P. Steele, Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Steele?
Thank you, Ms. Juror. Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy. In your packet, you have the Budget and Planning Report, but I'd like to start off with a piece of good news, that you'll get the full document at the next board meeting. But the Government Finance Officers Association just sent us a notification that our comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR for fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, qualifies for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And you'll get further details on that on the next board. The next item is in Food Services, and as you know, this has come up in the last, I believe, two or three years. In 2010, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act through USDA went into effect. The purpose of the legislation was to ensure that students receiving free lunches received the full advantage of the funding for their meals. At the same time, higher nutrition standards were also put in place. Since all students were to receive the same nutritious meals, paying students would be expected to pay the equivalent price for their meals. Historically, in some divisions, lunches for paying students were subsidized by the reimbursements for the free and reduced-priced lunches while nutritional content suffered for all. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act prohibited this subsidy, and a formula was determined by USDA on the equitable price for paying students for incorporating, what was incorporated into the act. So what follows in your document there is the USDA calculation to determine the increase for the meals. The bottom line is that Portsmouth Public Schools is required by law to increase the lunch price by five cents in school year 2015 to 2016, and it is also built into the budget that's already been submitted. An update on some transportation issues. A repeater is scheduled to ship this week, the week of April 23, and the vendor will install the antenna prior to delivery of the repeater. The repeater is scheduled to be programmed and installed by the first week of May. Also, the city garage has received four new school buses, and the remainder are to arrive soon. On April 3, the operations staff met with the city to discuss the replacement of the district's white fleet vehicles. And as you know, they've been deemed some of the oldest vehicles in the city of Portsmouth. In Facilities Maintenance, we've listed several projects that have recently been completed, and it talks about those different projects. The carpet in the band and chorus rooms at WE Waters, the chiller pump was replaced at Woodrow Wilson High, and the main office area at Mount Herman was painted with additional work to be over the summer. A broken basketball backboard was replaced at Craddock. We had a large tree removed at the playground at Emily Spong. During the spring break, I think this happened, is the stage floors have been refinished at Churchill Elementary, Douglas Park Elementary, Hodges Manor Elementary, and the back walls of these three schools will be receiving a fresh coat of paint this month. And we're also installing additional security cameras on the bus ramps for all three high schools. For crossing guards, we're also getting training from the Portsmouth Police Department, is working with the Transportation Management to develop a training curriculum for all crossing guards. And all crossing guards will attend the training over the summer break. And on March 10 through 12, we have a couple of our operations staff attend the National Facilities Management and Technology Conference in Baltimore to talk about a lot of the issues dealing with the facility organization and building a better business case for a facilities master plan. And of course, that plays into what we're looking at for our capital improvement plan. A few of the items, well, we did talk, or Curriculum and Instruction did talk about the grant for Virginia Middle School Teacher Corps. Also, we got notified of the Title I allocations that will be in the new grant year. So at the end of March 2015, the Virginia Department of Education received preliminary Title I allocations from the U.S. Department of Education. The allocations reflect changes to national and state allocations based on the total nationwide of $14.4 billion in Title I Part A funds that the Congress made available under Public Law 113-235, which is the Consolidated and Continuing Appropriations Act. At this time, it's estimated that the Commonwealth of Virginia will receive a total Title I allocation that will be about 4.06% increase over the funding from the previous year. From this preliminary amount, they've shown that the allocations to Virginia Portsmouth Public Schools is estimated to receive about $6.6 million, a little over $6.6 million, for the school year 2015 to 16. This is an approximate 15% increase over the previous year for Title I allocation. This estimate does not reflect state set-asides, changes in final census data, and other adjustments required by law. As such, the final allocation may differ from the preliminary allocation, but this appears to be good news. One of the other grants we received is, on April 1, VDOE notified the Division of Award of $1,000 to four of our new teachers through the Career Switcher New Teacher Mentor Program. In Risk Management, our Risk Control Consultant with VACOR reported only seven auto liability claims this year costing approximately $22,000. VACOR indicated that this is a quite safe operation of the fleet and praised the operation of vehicles. Information Technology, you have a bunch of information on the Sharp School Custom Mobile App that is getting ready to deploy. The Office of Information Technology is working with Sharp School in a design custom mobile applications for the division and for each school website. Currently, we have a canned, there's a canned Basic Mobile Application that is available through Google Play, both via Android and iTunes, Apple Stores. Community members can download and install the basic Sharp School application onto their mobile devices by searching for Sharp School. The Basic App provides minimal functionality to our users and the Sharp School logo and colors. Going down further, it explains some of the things that will be on that mobile app. The initial design was supplied to the vendor designers on Monday, April 13. But you can see, the Division app will include the following links, bus routes, contacts in the division, directions, events, the district calendar, school year, the Division instructional calendar, menus at the schools for breakfast and lunch, news, a parent portal, full menus at the schools for breakfast and lunch, news, a parent portal, full site, options on the website, and switch schools automatically added when a user chooses favorite schools after the installation. And there's some additional information here, and you can see the logos on the report. And that almost ends my report, but I'd like to make a couple comments on the budget situation right now, just to keep some dates in your mind. As you know, the city manager submitted a city budget on March 30, and evidently, that budget is, has been overcome by events. The city council will have a budget meeting. What's advertised now is a working session and a public hearing on Tuesday on the 28th, and the date is coming fast, is on 12 May, the city council is designated to approve the budget. So things are going to be moving fairly quickly. The school board finance committee will be meeting right after the Budget Committee on the 28th to discuss what we see as impacts so we can report to the full board. I do also want to indicate that this week, it was, the state results some good news on the long-term revenue front, is that revenues are coming in a lot higher than expected at the state level, and this is encouraging for K-12 because they have indicated additional revenues may be targeted to K-12 deficiencies in closing the gap from the funding that was in place from the state from 2009. And as you know, there was a big cutback in state funding started in 2009. So hopefully, this is encouraging news that'll start to result in additional funding coming to K-12. And with that, that ends my report.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Bridford. Good evening, Mr. Steele. Thank you for your report. The question I have, I'm going to go back to the first part of your presentation with food services. And I'm going to look at this from a retail standpoint. Is the amount that we charge for our lunches, does that diminish the quality of food that is served to our students compared to, say, a Virginia Beach or a Hampton? Because my concern is hunger. If our food is not the best food that we can give, if our food has diminished quality for whatever reason because we're not charging enough to get better options for food or have better vendors for our food, then we really need to look at this formula. Because if it is good food, we will have more people purchasing lunches in our cafeterias rather than bringing in or going hungry. So is the cost that we charge for food diminishing the types of food that we can have in our cafeterias?
I don't believe so. I guess one of the things that might be helpful for the board that I could bring back at the next session is participation rates. Because one of the things that all school districts are looking at is the participation, say, of breakfast and lunch of our students eating the food that's offered to them. So there is a lot of research that shows, as you have increased participation, of course, that students will do better in the classroom, but also, so you want to compare yourselves not only to trends, but also maybe with other school districts or benchmarks. So I could certainly bring that type of information back to the school board.
You're correct, because being hungry is an academic problem, it's a behavior problem, and it's just a success problem. Or it's a, you know, it can be a barrier for some of our students. And for some of our students that do come and get breakfast and lunch and may not eat again until breakfast the next day, we need to make sure that we have high-quality food that they want to eat. And the other piece of this is the fact that if it's not good, and they still take it and it still ends up in the trash, then that is a waste of tax dollars. So I'm trying to do, to do both here, to make sure that we are providing good services, and if this cost is a barrier for that, then we need to address that. Thank you.
Mr. Parent?
It's my understanding, and maybe things have changed, the menus, are they not prepared? Who prepares the menus now? I remember about 10 years ago, menus were given to the cafeteria managers, and it was across, I mean, it was across the district. Are these menus given to us by the state? Because I know a lot of times, they're posted. Who creates our menus in our school system?
I'm not sure I have the answer to that. I'm going to have to come back to you on exactly the source of the menu. I know, we approve menus, and they get ideas for the menus from a lot of different sources, both at the federal and state level, but exactly how that works and what the final decisions are, I'd have to come back to you on.
Okay, that's fine. Just because I agree with Mrs. Hines Duncan, because the bottom line is that children love pizza. I mean, I've got grandkids, and they like pizza. And when that's available, they buy pizza. And of course, you know, it's like the broccoli and all the other vegetables that you want your children to eat, they just look at that and say, hmm, no, I'm going to go for the pizza. And I bet you anything that when we serve pizza and other kinds of products like that, they're going to eat that, because that's what kids like. But we're trying to provide a nutritional meal that incorporates, I mean, and this whole concept of the Healthy Hunger, the whole act was to provide a healthy meal but low in calories. But yet, it was a nutritional meal that was, but you know, kids are going to be kids. I mean, they're going to choose what they want to eat. So I would like to know where do we receive our menus? And maybe we can improve. And I know that they give options. It's not just one thing. I understand that there are options that children can choose from. My grandkids are in Virginia Beach. You go through the line with them, and you get to choose several options. So it's just not one thing on the plate you can choose.
That's correct.
So I'd just like to, I'm just interested in how our menus are.
I'll get that information.
Thank you.
Reverend Fleming?
Mr. Steele, I do see where you all did some training with the crossing guards, and I definitely commend you on that. Are we going to get an update from work session as it relates? And when can I anticipate the update about crossing guards and making sure that all of them have been given the appropriate uniforms, the right size, et cetera?
Yes, Reverend Fleming, it didn't make the packet in, but we did call every single crossing guard.
I appreciate it.
And got ahold of them to identify their deficiencies. And I believe over 30% of them have already come in to the warehouse and received replacement or additional gear. We do have a life cycle on some of the items, but if it's worn out, we replace it, and that's what we did in a lot of cases. There were some crossing guards that were issued a particular item, but now they were asking for a different size because the original size didn't, and we're trying to accommodate those. We were able to issue most of that stuff out of the warehouse. However, there are some things that we did have to order for, like some of the size changes, and we expect those in between one to two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you again, Chairman Bridford. My question was, with the recent change of events in the city council, and I was wondering, have you, has Dr. Bracy or you have made any contact with the acting city manager or their finance person to discuss the upcoming presentation for the budget again?
At this point, we have had no, I guess, in-depth discussions. There are a couple minor issues that we were asking, but we, at this point, we have had no discussions with them, and they have not asked us for any information.
Do you think it would be wise to have a discussion with them before they do the presentation, since city council asked them to come back and make some adjustments?
Well, we certainly, well, I probably want to defer maybe to higher authority here, but I think we want to know what's in their mind, what the thoughts are.
Exactly. Yes. The question?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I agree with you, and we.
Can you all make contact with the acting city manager and the CFO so that you will have some type of idea before it's presented again?
Sure. We'll take care of that first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, just with the school lunch program issue, I think it was mentioned that increasing participation may be somehow related to increasing nutrition. But I think, as one board member already mentioned, just because students are paying for the lunch and are enrolled in the lunch program, does not necessarily mean that they're eating it. Because some students just receive the lunch and throw most of it away. So I think we really have to work on how we can improve the quality of the menu and the selections that are provided to the students.
Mrs. Hines?
Thank you, Dr. — just to piggyback on that, maybe, Dr. Bracy, we need to look at some guidance about how to improve, as I have learned, a guilt-free autopsy, sometimes maybe having somebody come in and look at what it is that we do and give us some suggestions as to how better do it, whether that's with different vendors, but knowing limitations, knowing what our standards are. Maybe this is the time where we can bring a consultant in to really look at that and to see how we can do that better, if we need to do it better, and how we can change it to make it better.
Okay.
Mr. Parent?
To follow up with Mrs. Williams's question, and I'm sitting here, because the only way that we're, I mean, the only way we're going to improve the image of Portsmouth is that we've got to communicate. And I don't understand at this point, because Tuesday night, there's going to be a work session of city council with their budget, and I don't understand at this point why the two entities have not come together to at least, we have some idea of what to expect. Because, I mean, this train is moving, and there's going to be a budget that's going to be approved by city council, by the school board and city council. We don't know how to proceed until we know what kind of funding we're going to receive. So it seems to me that, you know, we're saying to Dr. Bracy, and that there needs to be a meeting, and he'll call tomorrow, the interim city manager, to set up a meeting, but it seems to me that the entities are going to have to come together and resolve some of these issues. I think the citizens of Portsmouth are tired of these games that we're playing, and the school system, if we're going to move forward, we've got to move forward and work together. And I know Dr. Whitaker is sitting out in the audience. I mean, he's a strong advocate for education, and so is our mayor Wright is a strong advocate for education. But we can't go into this guessing what we're going to receive, and then we have to put together a budget at the last minute of, we're going to get this much, and then we have to eliminate these kinds of things. We just need to sit down and talk and communicate. It's just, it just blows my mind that we can't all work together and move down the road together. And I think if we do those kinds of things, we're going to see a better Portsmouth and the better communications between the city council and the school board. We want the same thing. And I hope that this meeting, this phone call to the interim city manager will take place ASAP and that we'll get some resolution, because otherwise, we're just going to be guessing there, and we don't need to be doing that, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. Since we're talking about budget, I'll go ahead and throw my two cents in. Listening to Mayor Holly, excuse me, Mayor Wright, and I do that every time, Mayor, I'm so sorry. Mayor Wright, at the council meeting, say to his departments to expect a 7% cut across the board. I would expect that we do need to do some cutting of our budget. I would hope that it's not 7%, but I think we need to be looking and listening to what he told his departments, because his departments get money from him. We get money, not from him, but I'm looking at him as well. But we need to be ready to make budget cuts as well. And it is very challenging to do that cut, whatever cut it is, 3%, 7%, in a two-week time. I would like for our budget and finance office and our financial committee of the board to have time to make smart, thoughtful cuts rather than ambiguous cuts to make sure that the quality of education in Portsmouth stays the best that it can with our constraints. Resources are limited, and we have to be good stewards of that, but to make a hurried cut in a matter of about seven working days from the time the city council is done to when we have to have a budget done, puts a huge strain on our staff. So I would appreciate, as everybody else has said, communication, but I would also champion to this board and to our finance people, we need to be ready and prepared for those 5% to 7% cuts as necessary, because we're all in this together, and we only have a limited amount of resources to go around. Thank you.
Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Jefferson said that children are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. A free education is not free. A free education costs. And when I look at per pupil cost across the Commonwealth, our per pupil cost for our very, very special population is among the lowest in the Commonwealth. I beg to disagree with you, ma'am. And just like one of the previous speakers mentioned Fairfax County, Northern Virginia, the expectation on the child in poverty is the same as any other child in the Commonwealth. The SOQ is skewed. I believe any cut in our proposed budget would be deplorable, reprehensible, and doing a disservice to our employees and our student bodies. And what's really getting me about this whole thing is, like a parable, if we were separated and I depended upon someone for child support, we wouldn't be going to the judge every May to see how much money I'd be getting. We would be, I could have that figure pretty well steady all along. But what this amounts to is, we are going to the judge, we start going to him in February, and, you know, by the middle of May, we're on our knees praying in the middle of night that someone does the right thing. And this has got to stop. We can't depend on steady funding. And I believe that the city council, in a heart of hearts, may have made some appropriate changes recently to this end. But anybody on our staff or our board who condones cutting our budget, I have some serious reservations about that. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just want to say that children do not have a voice. As a school board, we are speaking for them. And as a school board, we met, we discussed this budget, and the majority of us voted to forward this budget to the city council. What we're asking for is what we need as a school board to ensure, again, that all children in the city of Portsmouth have the opportunity to get a quality education. children in the city of Portsmouth have the opportunity to get a quality education. As a school board or as an individual, to deny a child the right to a quality education, at least from my perspective, is criminal, because you're placing them at a disadvantage, not only as a child, but potentially for the rest of their life. And so to say that we need to cut our budget is reprehensible.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, my comment is that we have been cut since 2009, 2008, over $22 million. We presented a forwarded budget to city council that we thought would bring us, not where we need to be, but to be fair, to get us moving in the right direction. Although the school board's budget has been consistently cut, and the percentage, I can't recall what percentage, but I can say, if I've heard it correctly, that the city's budget has continuously grown by a great percentage over what we had. So to say that we need to cut our budget is counterproductive, because the entire board voted that we would send it to council as it was, because we are trying to repair some damage that's been done since the Great Recession and since all the cuts we suffered from the state. So we are asking for the city council to fund the budget request that we presented, and certainly, that was not our vote to go and look for any cuts. Because I've worked for the city, and I can tell you, over the last two years, they haven't cut anything. They've constantly hired people, promoted people. And so I think that we need to do some things. We've cut custodians down to the bones. We need to do a lot of things, teachers' assistance, teachers bring the things up that we need to do to provide a quality education for our children. Because as the school system goes, so does the community. So we need to work on doing what we can to get it where we need it to be. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more requests to speak, Mr. Steele, were you finished with your presentation there?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll go to item number 12 for electronic vote. Excuse me. Request for the approval of an award for an emergency procurement for IC Norcom boilers.
Need for approval. Need for approval.
All right, we got a second.
Second.
Okay, it's probably a second that we...
I have a class.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm going to do a discussion that will approve the award for the emergency procurement. Okay, now for discussion, and then I'll ask Mr. Steele if you had anything additional information to add. Okay, Dr. Whitaker.
Okay, just a clarification on this particular award. The company that's noted as a minority-owned business that's going to be subcontracted with?
Yes, that's a subcontract, as indicated in the package. We had four bids on this project. None of them were MWBE, so we were concerned about trying to get as much subcontracting work as possible onto the prime. And initially, the top vendor was going to self-perform, but we were able to discuss with him, and he was very amenable to looking at maximizing opportunities for MWBE, so we were able to get a subcontract.
Okay, and do you know, in terms of how much that work will be that's going to that subcontract?
Actually, it's a very minor part. I can tell you, it does not reach the project goal that we had. There were two opportunities for subcontracting on this that included crane work and also insulation work. We thought we had another MWBE for the crane work, but the one MWBE that we thought could do it declined the job.
So you don't have an amount?
I'm thinking it's less than $5,000 out of that. It's a very small amount, and it's probably close to, I thought it was on here, but... I'm thinking it's probably close to, it's less than 5% of the job. And I think the project goal was somewhere around 7.9, I believe.
So out of that $153,000, you're saying that only $5,000 is going to minority-owned business?
Correct.
And has this, has this been approved by Transformation?
We've been going back and forth with Transformation. In fact, they were very helpful in providing some additional MWBEs that we could give to the prime vendor to seek out quotes. And the reason this came in kind of at the last minute is the one that we did get, the MWBE came to IC Norcom to do a quick site survey and then provided the quote, and we got that information this morning, actually.
Because I'm not comfortable with such a small amount of the total project going to that one, you only have one MWBE, and it's only $5,000 out of $153,000.
That's correct. We did not reach our aspirational goal.
Well, can that be revised, or are there ways to find other contractors that could work on the project that are minority-owned before we vote on this?
The four primes that did bid, none of them were MWBEs, so...
I'm talking about in terms of the subcontract that can be done, because you only have one, and it's only $5,000 going to that one.
That's correct. We would have to find the apparent low bidder non-responsive to the bid and throw them out of the bid before we went to the next bidder.
Well, as it is now, I couldn't vote on approving it. I'm just saying that's my position on it.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I was, and I think you've answered the question, Mr. Steele, with your response to Dr. Whitaker, what was the month timeframe that MWBE had it? And is it because they were looking for, because this was ready in March, and it's now April that we're getting it? And so to me, on the report, it looked like there was a month that maybe you were working with MWBE to find?
That's correct. We were working with Transformation and also the prime vendor to try to maximize the MWB opportunity. Originally, this vendor came in and provided, in accordance with the MWB policy, a form indicating that they'll self-perform. When the information came in from them, we asked them further documentation to show, have you done self-performing of, say, these types of jobs in the past? They did provide that information, and the data indicated that they did, and a lot of their jobs self-perform, all these jobs. There were a couple that they did have some subcontracting opportunities. And the vendor then came in and said, well, there's a couple things in here, I could maybe a subcontract, even though normally I may not. And that was the crane and insulation services.
My concern at this point is the fact that this happened in December, and it's now April, and we're four months out. The emergency, you know, the emergency procurement, to me, was a four, in my brain, I had four to six weeks, and we're four months out. I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we have to do emergency, an emergency procurement, I would hope that next time, the process can be a little quicker, because if we were still in February and we were running on a half of a boiler because we were out, we would have some very upset parents that were here. And on the flip side, if we get into the summer and we have a cooler that goes out and we have a 90-degree June, that's another issue as well. So I'm just curious about, oh, sorry, about the timeframe for an emergency procurement. That's all.
I can say that some of the delay was due to the fact of snow. We had two site visits scheduled that had to be canceled because of snow day closings. So we were actually into our third site visit before we could get vendors on, you know, into the school.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, just wanted to say, I mean, it's no longer necessarily an emergency procurement, given the fact that we're now out of the winter months. So again, as I said, I think only $5,000 going to a minority contractor out of $153,000, to me, is not acceptable.
Mr. Nance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Steele, we've talked about this before. Historically, many contractors use the self-performance piece as a shield to fall behind in order not to comply. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steele, would it do any good if you retract this and try with Transformation? You say Transformation tried with you to come through with a performance, for minority performer?
What Transformation provided is taking a look at those subcontracting opportunities the prime vendor indicated and sought out vendors that could potentially do those services. And one was actually, we were hopeful for the crane services, but the MWBE, when presented with the job, indicated that it was not quite lining up with what they really do, so they declined to bid on that job. The insulation services, though, that's the one where we got an MWBE, they did a site visit with the prime, and the sub submitted a quote that the prime said was acceptable, and they didn't have to modify their bid at all, and they would be ready to go.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is, with the help of Transformation, this is the best that they could do with you? That's the bottom line question. The bottom line question is, even with the help of Transformation, this was the best we could do?
Well, at this point, the vendor has submitted the information that was required to be responsive, but if we find them non-responsive because of the MWB, we have to declare them non-responsive. Now, I don't know if that could generate a protest or not. We might want to seek out legal counsel on throwing out a low bidder in this case and what the potential ramifications are, then go to the second bidder and then look at their subcontracting opportunities. In each case, you know, we, right now, they're at like 150. I think the, if you look at the bid tab, you can see the price differences between the different vendors.
Attorney counsel for this one. Mr. Meekins, do we have that flexibility where we could defer this or pull it back and put it back out again?
I have not seen the request for bid, the request for proposal. I do not know the parameters that we put in regard to the MWBE program, so I really, can I tell you whether we could disqualify the bidder on the basis of that lack of participation? I just do not know. Certainly, if you disqualify the bidder, as Mr. Steele said, lawfully, then you could go to the next bidder, but I'm just not sure I could answer to you whether we have the grounds to disqualify the lowest bidder at this point.
All right, I've got some more people. Dr. Whitaker.
As a board, can we move?
Is your mic on?
I'd like to move, make a motion to the table.
I've got a motion on the floor.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
I've got a motion on the floor.
Well, I have a question, then. The two, the two minority companies that you mentioned in the proposal, these are companies that the, that the company that was selected came back with, not Transformation.
For the low bidder and the MWBE?
For the MWBE. These were the two companies that you mentioned, the crane and the insulation. These were companies that the awardee came back with.
No, these were, well, these were companies that Transformation sought out, offered to the prime as potential subcontractors. The prime had asked for help, actually, to look for MWBEs, and this is what Transformation provided.
Okay.
Mr. Parrott.
Are these boilers that, I mean, I understand that we're going to be purchasing three. Is that correct? Three?
Correct.
Smaller boilers?
Three boilers are replacing two, same capacity, but with phasing in of boilers based on need, it's going to be a lot more efficient.
Now, is it, are they manufactured? I mean, what is the lead time? In other words, once, when we award this bid, how much lead time does the company have in order to manufacture, ship, and have it in place? Because if we keep...
I'm told the lead time for manufacture for these items is six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks. Okay.
Mr. Nance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I feel like the grandfather on Moonstark right now. I'm really confused. The city of Portsmouth, are they going to reimburse us after we spend this? I didn't know, I remember, we talked about it in our joint meeting with them. I didn't know if they were supposed to be handling this because it's a capital project, or we're handling our own capital project, or is it like a roulette wheel? We just spin it and see where it lands, and they handle it?
We requested the city some CIP assistance on this, and they said they didn't have any, that they could, we had two options, that we could reallocate CIP already-approved funding from existing projects and take the funding away from those projects to fund this, or we could decide to use our operating fund to pay for this.
Wow. So that's just like saying, if your school buses don't run and you don't have any money, and we said we were going to take care of it, you can just leave them on the side of the road, basically.
We do have a systemic problem with CIP, even in the current proposed budget. We have over $50 million of projects. They're funding us at about a $2 million clip. So there's a systemic funding shortfall that needs to be addressed in addition to the operating budget that we need to address, because we're going to continue to go in a downward spiral over the years.
Yeah, it's just like we're separated again, and we got to go to the judge because the kid needs braces, when the agreement said that the other party would handle the medical and the dental. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Since we have so many questions and so much, you know, uncertainty, and we did ask a legal question from our counsel, could we certainly, could we defer this, since the boilers, they are the boilers, and we are in the spring, so we do have a little leeway now. Could we get an answer from our legal counsel at the next meeting? Could we defer this until we could get some more direction?
Well, what I would do is ask that you pull the motion and the second, and then we'll defer the item. That would be the easiest way to do it, or you're going to vote it down. I would rather...
Well, I would like to hear what our legal counsel would have to say about the issue that Mr. Steele brought up.
Yeah, well, in that case, then I would ask for it to be pulled back.
Yeah, I don't know who made the motion. I don't know.
I think I made the motion and Room Patillo.
Okay, if they will pull the second and the motion, then...
I'm perfectly agreeable to pull it. Thank you, Room Patillo.
Agreeable? Agreeable, it's been pulled and deferred, and Mr. Meekins has it for a legal reply for our next meeting, and in the meantime, try to get with Transformation and see if they can help you come up with, I want to say another person, but I want to say advice from them.
We'll work with legal counsel and Transformation.
Okay, good deal. Okay, so this is deferred. Okay, so this is deferred. Okay, item number 13, request for approval of the financial report for March 2015.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the standard monthly financial report. In this case, it's for March 2015. It provides revenues and expenditures for the general fund and all the other funds that we have. It'll indicate that the revenues are at 71%. Our expenditures right now are at 62%. That's reflected on the burn rate chart. You can see that we were kind of tracking, but we've kind of fell off. We expect in the April report that that, those lines will join again because of a spending plan we, that will show those, those types of expenditures, bringing, bringing that up. The other pages in this report, again, are the standard report, which have more detail on object and category, account lines, and then after that are the funds for the grants, the textbooks, the food services, and the print shop. And we request approval for the March report that also, now we send a copy of this to city council and the city manager.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Steele, that was my first question. Has a copy of this been forwarded to the city manager and the city council so they can see this, as we discussed in our joint meeting when we met with them last?
Not, not until you approve it.
That, as long as it's going. My concern is the fact, and I'm glad you brought it up, is the burn rate that we have sitting right now. Our burn rate is at 60%. We're at 75% of our year. So, if I take that and add it out, I'm looking at, we're only spending 85% to 88% of our budget, just at the trend rate. And I know that there are things that are going to be coming and, and all that good stuff. However, my concern is the money that's left over, and I'm thinking to next year, Dr. Bracy, because it's, it's come to our attention more than once and we've been told that there are remedies for it, but how are we going to spend the money at the end of the year so that it positively impacts the classroom? Because we consistently have comments that there's no supplies, that there's no toilet paper, that there's no paper towels. And so, if we have a pocket of money left over at the end of the year, we should be able to put things in place that positively impact the classroom and not to be frivolously spending money. And, and I'm not saying that we've done that, but I know that at year-end money, sometimes we, there has been a tendency sometime to just spend a bunch, a bunch. What I would like to do is make sure that this money that is being spent is being spent on useful classroom items because that's where it needs to get the most. Thank you.
Did you want to respond right now? Dr. Bracy, you want to wait after everyone?
Wait to everyone.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker?
I just want to say, I think it's irresponsible to say that the school board would spend money on things that are not needed at the end of the year. And to make that statement, I think it's an inaccurate statement and it's defamatory to say that as a board, we would take extra money that's left over and just throw it out there and spend it on anything. We have a responsibility as a board to use that money responsibly and to spend it on things that are needed for our students.
Mr. Nance?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you. Mr. Steele, we're looking at the financial report from March, right?
Correct.
So, basically, we're into this three weeks beyond what you're presenting now, correct?
Correct.
And I learned a little math when I was in Portsmouth Public Schools, and when I take the expenditures and divide them by the revenues, I come up with 88.2%, okay? Which means you are sitting at about 10.8% of a cushion right now, which, you know, we can't overspend, and, you know, many households, if they had a 10% cushion, they'd kind of be upset. So, I commend you for that. And I understand why you haven't spent the 10.8% because at any moment, the agreement or the landscape may change and it may have to go to something else. We may have another catastrophe happen that in agreements, we thought somebody else was going to handle, and we had to handle it. So, for, certainly for that, I commend you. And I'm sure that there's quite a bit of need in our division that if there's any cushion toward the end of the year, that it, you know, would be spent responsibly, as we've always done. And for that, I certainly want to commend you. But, you know, you know what my feeling is about returning money, and I think it's quite clear that not a dime goes back because it's on the backs of children. Thank you.
Mrs. Hines?
I just wanted to clarify my statements if they came across as defamatory, the fact that the money that is being left over at the end of the year, I would like for it to go to specific classroom needs, whether it's retention bonuses, whether it is a one-time bonus for teachers, if we have that in position savings, if we have that to do. When I was in the classroom, we got $150, $200 to stock our classroom with supplies and materials that would be needed, rather than asking parents to bring them in on supply list at the beginning of the year. So, what I'm really looking for is a classroom-based vision for spending this year in money.
Ruben Matillo?
Thank you. In reference to the budget, I, I try to stay away normally from a lot of the rhetoric when it comes to speaking on the budget, but I've heard a lot of language tonight that I don't approve of as far as maybe cutting the budget or expressing a need that we don't have more, we don't have a need for more. I've visited 18 schools since January. I've spoken with administration, with teachers. I look at the lack of funding in our STEM programs with Starbase, the overcrowding of our classrooms, the need for qualified math teachers, and there's no way you can visit locker rooms and gymnasiums in some of our schools and say that we don't need funding. So, I'm going to say it was a miracle from God that we have our, our councilman here and our interim city manager, they need to hear these needs, and I'm glad they're here. And also, I know that we have some projects that were already approved to be done, but if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Steele, some of those were actually probably put off until we got our new superintendent in to do, correct?
We do have a long list of, of spending items, and again, a lot of these were backburner, even from years before because of lack of funding. So, it's, it's not that we, we don't have a backlog of critical items. We do, and, and so, we prioritize those based on funding that's available.
Yeah. Okay, Dr. Bracy wants to, Mr. Pyron, if you, if you'll film for me, he wants to start speaking on these. Dr. Bracy?
Yeah, just to address the, the matter of the, the money that's, that's not spent now. When I came on board, there, Mr. Steele and I talked about that, and what I asked him to do was to give us some time, give me some time, so that I could do some visits, so I could talk to some of the administrators and do some observations of myself before we actually made a plan. So, with that, that may have held things up a bit, but I wanted to put a, a plan in place of need. So, that's what we've worked on over the last month, and with the plan that we have in place that we'll share Wednesday at our, at our work session with our, with our subcommittee is the, are the projects and the timeline associated with it. And we have a lot of, most of it, all of it is instructional, instructional needs. We're making a move for technology. It's going to affect the infrastructure in the, in the buildings, also the, the computers and laptops for the students themselves with the high school initiative. So, everything is laid out. If you look at it, you, you won't see any, Mr. Lam, well, no, Mr. Nance, the, the projected rate is really, is, is going to be close to zero. We don't want to go below that, but based on the need, there, there are plenty of needs. There are plenty of needs, and that's what we're, we're looking at, along with the end of year push for the SOL. We've talked with the schools and given them extra funds so that they could do whatever they felt they needed to do with tutors coming in and providing transportation for those students that are staying over. So, a lot of thought went into the, the plan of how we would utilize these extra funds. So, and I know no one thinks that we would just spend the money any way. I know no one thinks that, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, that there was a thoughtful process and a plan in place of us doing that.
Okay, Mr. Pyron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Bracy, for that report. One of the things that, and I'm glad we have Dr. Whitaker here and not I'm there here, and our interim city manager sitting back in the back, is one of the things that I'm hoping will come is that we will be released of this burden of categorical funding and orderly appropriation. Because if we, if, in one particular category, if we need, if we need money in one category, we have to then request the city council to approve moving money from one category to another. So, it slows this whole process down, whereas if we get the yearly appropriation, then we can begin to, to move forward and not be hampered by city council having to approve. I think we have proven ourselves that the financial reports that you're receiving are very detailed of, Mr. Bridgford and I are working on the Subcommittee for Finance, and we go through each of those areas. So, I'm really hoping, Dr. Whitaker, that, and, and Mayor Wright, that we can be released of this burden that we, that happens to us because we want it to be thoughtful. We want to make sure that, because I've been a principal, I know those kinds of needs that our teachers must have, and technology is growing. We talk about technology all the time, but if we, we don't put the technology in the hands of the students, they don't have, if you don't have the infrastructure, then it can't be, the technology you're, you're purchasing cannot be adequately used. So, I am hoping that we will be released of this burden and that we've at least proven to council that we are responsible and that we're doing, and, and we are transparent for how we're spending that money and that we've earned this right to have this burden removed. Thank you.
Okay. I see no more requests to speak. We're on the consideration of the financial report for March 2015, and questions were coming up. Now, if there are no further questions, what is the board's pleasure?
May for approval.
Because we moved and it's properly second that we adopt the financial report is given by Mr. Steele and a discussion, even a further discussion. If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Thank you, board members, and it will be sent over to council like we have been told that we would do, we'll keep our part of that, and I'm going to make one final statement. I think between Mr. Pyron and myself, every two weeks, we're up here looking at the budget, possibly three, we spend a lot of time, and I think this board has gathered together and set their priorities of what they wanted to do for this last, next budget cycle, along with the needs that we have specified. Sometimes, we don't get everything we need. We don't know what we're going to get, but we hope that we're going to get the basic and be able to move along. I would really like to get our needs, and I'll stop on that note. Next item, superintendent's report. Dr. Bracy, do you have anything to report to the board tonight?
I'll give you a few updates, sir. I know the hour's late, but some of the, some of these are so good that I, I can't hold them. I want to first say that, that I was very pleased to be able to be part of the Starbase Golf Tournament that was held today. Mr. Muttlow, maybe you didn't see me there, but I was there. I was there when the rockets launched and when the one rocket launched before time. So, yeah, that lets you know that I was, I was there, but I thought it was, was just so rewarding to see the, the community come together to support a great cause. Starbase, in my short tenure, has definitely proved to be one of our, one of our special programs, and it's definitely one that has a spotlight on Portsmouth Public Schools. So, anything that, that we can do and we see others do to help us with that, we definitely want to say thank you. A note, the mathematics education office will conduct the Grade VI Mathematics Challenge on Friday, April 24th, in the gymnasium of Victory Elementary. Of course, this is mathematics awareness month. The first annual battle of the Portsmouth between Churchland High Truckers and Woodrow Wilson High Presidents will take place on Tuesday, May 12th, at 3:00 p.m. at Harbor Park in Norfolk. This morning, our students in selected grade levels and their chaperones attended the 2015 Virginia Arts Festival Invitational Tattoo at the Norfolk Scope. And in the April 2015 issue of the VSB A Showcase for Success, it features a description of the Portsmouth Career and Technical Education Program. And lastly, Dr. Michelle W. Woodhouse, Provost of the Portsmouth Campus of Tyre Water Community College, has invited us to help celebrate the 10th anniversary of the first college program on Friday, May 8th, at 8:00 a.m. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Next item on the agenda is item number 15 for electronic roll call, electronic vote, is request for approval of a long-term suspension with possible readmission by a plan developed by superintendent and is just in case number 2014-15/21. Board's pleasure.
May for approval.
We moved and properly second that we approved the long-term suspension with the readmission plan. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
Eight yes votes, one abstention. It passes.
Okay. Item number 16 for discussion, board members' comments and concerns. Do we have any comments or concerns? Mrs. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. With Teacher Appreciation Week coming up, I wanted to go ahead and thank our teachers now as we get into the throes of the testing season, as we start with AP testing the first week of May and we roll into SOL testing. By the time I, I get to sit up here again that week, we'll be gone. So, I did, I wanted to take the time to say thank you for what you do for our students on a daily basis. I do have one thing I would like to mention to the board and, and get it on a radar if we could, but possibly looking at an efficiency study with new leadership coming on with the school board. I think maybe it would be a, a time where we can have somebody come in and do a guilt-free autopsy to see what we can do better. I know that in recent years, the last time we did an efficiency study in, in Portsmouth was 2005, but cities like Petersburg and Norfolk and Hampton have all done efficiency studies in the last four years, and Hampton was the most recent, and they were able to reallocate and save 8.5 million in their budget. So, I may be looking at and would like to see what we can do as far as having an efficiency study done with new leadership and a new vision and a new, and a new thought process coming in here. For those that don't know, an efficiency study would ID best practices. It would look at things like our educational service delivery, financial management, transportation, technology, food services, all those key items that take place on a daily basis. So, a set of independent eyes, maybe looking at things that we can do better that we haven't seen with, with our eyes. So, that's one thing I would like to, for us to look at at a later date, but I wanted to mention it now.
It's, it's on the, it's in our, it's in that plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's already there.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Nance? Okay, I have one thing before we go back into closed session. I have a card here with two chairs sitting outside a window, and it's addressed to myself and the board. It's from one of our employees, and maybe you- It's from one of our employees, and maybe you all already know about it, that someone's planning on retiring July 1st. Deputy Clerk Laura, where is she? She's hiding back there. She's planning on leaving us July 1st, and she wrote us a two-page letter. She didn't want us to miss her before then. I'm going to pass this around, make sure you all see it.
She's not allowed to go. We have a voter on it.
No comment. What I would like to do now is to go back into closed session, hopefully it'll be for a short period of time, but for all intentional purposes, once we reach the closed session, this meeting will be adjourned.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Number, consideration of personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1. I've read the motion.
Need a second.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion was made to go into closed meeting and discussion. If not, I'll roll call Madam Clerk. This one going electronic. This is to continue from earlier session. Madam Clerk, we all here, so is that okay? You want to call our names? Okay. 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 Quitting vote for closed session. Mr. Nance, you vote no for closed session?
It did hit no.
I thought we were supposed to say yes or no.
I wanted a yes or no out of it, but.
Yours says no.
I said yes.
Mrs. Williams is not lit up at all.
Okay.
Mr. Nance, yours says no.
I get.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, we're in closed session. This public session is adjourned.